You ready to get started?
Welcome everybody tonight to the Graham City Council meeting. We're here to conduct the business of city of Graham. Welcome you all. Thank you for taking your time out of your busy day to join us tonight. I would like to please ask everybody to silence their cell phones. And Bobby, would you like to do the invocation? Okay, please bow your heads.
Father, we thank you for this opportunity that we can perform the duties of our positions in support of our citizens of Graham. Father, we thank you that you were watching over us with the rain that came over Sunday. Though there was physical property damage, we're grateful, dear Lord, that there wasn't any more serious fatalities as was seen down in Texas. Father, we ask that you grant us wisdom and discernment as we go about doing the business tonight. That we make decisions that are to the well being of our citizens. These things best to me, your son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. If you'll please stand for our Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
First item on our agenda is consent agenda. A to approve the June 10th, 2025 City Council meeting and the June 27th, 2025 special meeting minutes. B to award the city of Graham's audit contract for $31,270 for the fiscal year ending June 20th. What is it? Not 20th, 30th, right? 30th, June 30th, 2025 to stout Stuart McGowan King and LLP to approve a revision to section six dash nine law enforcement officer's special separation allowance to the city of Graham's personnel policy. To appoint Kevin Squires to this Graham Fire Department's Relief Fund Board of Trustees. E to approve a budget amendment recognizing $30,000 in federal drug forfeiture revenue. So anybody here tonight that would like to discuss one of these specific issues, it's on the consent agenda.
Elaborate or maybe have a city manager explain a little more about C.
Item C, Mayor has recently passed legislation offering the two options for the Leo separation allowance. It was adopted by the North Carolina General Assembly after the June City Council meeting with an effective date of July 1st. So this was the earliest we could bring it to you.
Which is interesting that they pass it and make it retroactive. But you know, it's, we're on top of it is what she's saying. They had not passed it yet at the time of our June meeting, but it has been passed. And we try to keep all of our revisions concurrent and consistent with state legislature changes. So hearing nothing from the audience, is there any questions from the City Council?
Nope.
Questions?
Better mayor, I make a motion, do we approve it as written?
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
We need to make that one correction to the date on.
Well, I read it correctly, yeah, 30th, yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Did you get who seconded it? Okay, all right. Public hearings, rezoning of 6.27 acres off Ivy Road and East Gilbert Street. A public hearing has been continued to consider the rezoning of 6.27 acres of property from R18 low density residential to see our conditional residential to construct 29 townhomes located off Ivy Road and East Gilbert. The planning board recommended approval five to zero with conditions continued from January 14th, February 11th, April 8th, May 13th and June 10th council meetings. I recognize Assistant City Manager Aaron Holland.
All right, thank you, Mayor. And it's not much that I would add to what you already stated. The applicant did take the statements from council back to make revisions based on some of the comments. So I would, if council was okay with it, turn to the applicant so they can go over some of the changes that were made from the last meeting.
Okay. This is a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak on the proposed rezoning, we'll need a motion to open the public hearing.
Better mayor, I make a motion, we open.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So who would like to speak first on this? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Nice to see all of you again. Amanda Hodyern here on behalf of the applicant and the petitioner offices at 804 Green Valley Road, Suite 200 in Greensboro. We're excited to be back before you on this, as was read out. This has been continued since your January hearing. We appreciate your patience letting us deliberate on that. And we're happy to be back tonight and able to proceed based on the results of that further investigation. As you may recall, and Mr. Holland stated at that time, the point of the continuance was to put on paper the discussions we were having at the end of that hearing to show the increased parking changes we could make and that sort of thing, which we have done. But in all fairness to our civil engineer, that's not what took so long. Once we started all that with such a specific and tight site plan with so many commitments, we wanted to make sure that it was something that could be delivered upon if approved. So my clients took the time to go ahead and do several key site investigatory matters that usually aren't done until after an entitlement. We did geotechnical studies. We did utility and site, site work, takeoff cost estimates. And we had an Army Corps of Engineers wetlands jurisdictional review and approval, just to ensure that our wetlands mapping was correct. And because of course, if that came back different, that would greatly impact the site plan that was before you all specifically. It would impact our ability to run sewer down the panhandle like we presented, which was very important to one of our neighbors. So we just wanted to make sure that everything we presented that we asked you to deliberate on was in fact feasible and achievable, the way we were presenting it. And it was, it took a long time, but it all was vetted even more so than normally done. And so we feel good about coming back before you tonight with this very specific plan.
Have you been out there since the storm?
I have not.
Have you, Andy?
Did a drive by on the way here, but I didn't walk the land this evening.
I'm just curious, the, um, I don't know, do the, does the, does, um, does the federal government dictate that that is actually a creek or like, do they designate it or is it just?
So I'll let Frank speak more specifically to what was in question. It was a drainage area specifically that we, we just wanted to be very sure about, and they did not mark it as a jurisdictional wetland. So. All right, so with that, we can just quick, I'm going to go pretty quickly over this. You all were very generous with your time back in January, so I don't want to be redundant again, but just if I need to stop or review anything, I'm happy to do so. All the slides are still here. I just wanted to address items that were new, but just real quick, of course, the red star is our site there at the corner of Ivy Road and Gilbert Street. So we can move to the next slide, please. The summary of the request, just to reorient us, 6.27 acres, as you heard, currently zoned R18. We are asking for the conditional residential, which is the site's and specific conditional zoning. It's the binding site plan, which we've submitted, has gone through TRC, which we've revised and resubmitted and is before you tonight. Of course, it does limit the, the yield to 29 homes in the context of the site plan that's being presented. In yellow here, just to focus in on what is advanced since January. As we said that night, we did, of course, accept all the conditions that planning board suggested and motions to you all as, as part of its recommendation for approval. Those are reflected in what's before you and in your packet. In addition to that, you'll see in your packet tonight, the changes that we made to effectuate the discussion we had back in January about ways to increase onsite parking, both by additions to the visitor parking spaces and by additions to the dedicated spaces per home by increasing the driveway dimensions. So we'll look at that specifically, but that's, that's, that's the crux of what's before you. The next slide, please. Again, just thanking you for your patience and letting you know what we've been up to all this time. Geotechnical analysis, that's of course, the site borings and looking at the quality of the dirt and its compactions. So that we're sure we can actually, you know, build these lots that can support the townhomes we're, we're asking for and proposing to make sure that that is achievable. And then we can get structural soundness there. The Army Corps of Jurisdictional, Army Corps of Engineers jurisdictional review, we've talked about. Because of course, if that came back different, that would greatly impact sewer route we're proposing. And then based on those verified engineering studies, we wanted to go ahead and get some real estimates for the site work and the utilities installations, just to make sure that what we're asking for is achievable. You know, we, we don't want to spend everyone's time and, and heartburn on this request if it was something we couldn't deliver on. And so we were able to get specific takeoffs based on all this investigation and engineering and, and are at a comfortable pre, pre project standpoint from, from, from a cost ability. So just moving forward, that's the zoning context that we talked about last time. You know, across the street from multifamily and industrial at this key intersection, just south of the interstate and off of the main street corridor. Next slide, please. So this is, this is the crux of the changes and of the, the requests. Here's the substance. This is that binding site plan. That's what that conditional rezoning means or conditional residential rezoning. So if we were to want to change this, if it were approved, if we wanted to change it later, that would require us or any owner of the property, because it runs with the land, to come back before you to ask for any increases in intensity or any us, what's called a major substantive change. So that's again, why we wanted to be very careful and thoughtful and investigate all of those feasibility studies. So along the, along the right hand side here, all of that wording is what I went over last time, just detailing some of the key features, ways that we've enhanced the buffers in excess of your ordinance and in response to conversations with our neighbors that we had through early outreach, through planning board and at council last, last time. In yellow, I've just highlighted things that are different. The guest parking that we've provided is increased. Way that that's been done is there's an additional space added up at the, up by the mailbox kiosk, which is closest to Gilbert Street there on the end. And then of course, by adding those spaces inside the gas easement, that's a contingent on the gas company's approval, like we talked about last time. But we've shown that here with that note stating that we will pursue that and, and build those subject to their approval, which we believe we can get. We've done that on prior projects, Frank and I. So that shows that, and then the additional, the additional changes are the reconfigured driveway dimensionality. I've got to zoom in of that on another slide, so we don't have to strain our eyes. I do have larger printouts, if anybody would like it, at 11 by 17 of this plan, if anybody needs one, just let me know. And then of course, the 31 feet back to back was, was offered at the last meeting, but it was not in your packet. So I just wanted to make note that it's in there tonight. And of course, that, that is what is shown on the current plans, since that was such an important part of the discussion last time. So if we could go to the next slide, this is just the remainder of the site plan, because we do have that panhandle that runs down. Next slide, please. So this is just in sets that I've snippets from that site plan that I've blown up to show you the way that our civil engineer Frank Cantrell has shifted those, those driveway dimensions. He described this to you narratively at the end of the meeting back in January. So this is exactly in keeping with what we discussed then, but this, of course, the point was for us to go back and revise it on paper and to present that to you. So that's what this shows. The inset on the left hand side is the, what we've called the south side of the street. It's the one that runs along the property that up close to Gilbert is adjacent to Mr. Co's property. It's adjacent to the industrial zoning further back along the panhandle. So lot 14 there, you see, we've, we've done a little detail of the cars showing that the driveway has in fact been both widened and lengthened to accommodate four cars without overhanging a sidewalk. And of course, that's because we removed the sidewalk from this side of the street, which is per our discussion last time. We talked a lot about what the council's preference would be on how to alter things in order to, to get a bigger driveway. The guidance was to, was to remove that sidewalk, only have it on the north side and to enlarge the driveway. So that's what we've done here. And you see that on the right hand side, which is the north side of the street, lot 23 here is detailed. And you see the three cars in the driveway, two side by side with that width, one in the garage. And then of course, you do see per our discussion back in January, that we do have the sidewalk on that north side of the street as, as we talked about, so that people could still have that connectivity to walk up to the mailbox kiosk to connect down to the walking trails that are in the active open space and that go down to the informal walking trails that already exist in the panhandle and that folks use along the creek to the west. So all that connectivity is in place as we discussed. If we could go to the next slide, please. This is shown on the face of the plan, but I just wanted to highlight it here. This is the parking information data. The January plan is at the top, the July plan is here at the bottom. Back in January, of course, the required parking has not changed. It's always been 58 spots as required by your development ordinance. Back in January, we were proposing fifth, six visitor parking spots. One was a van accessible space as required for ADA compliance. Total parking provided was 65. So now with, with your guidance from last, last January now implemented, we have 29 garage spaces, 58 spaces in the driveways achieved via the detail I just showed you. We have seven visitor spots because we added one at the end. We still have the one required handicap or van accessible space. We've got seven spots in that easement area that of course, we do have to get approval from the gas company, but we believe we can. And we did want to go ahead and show those for a total of 102 spaces. That's an increase of 37 spots. I believe if you reviewed the record, you'll see that when we narratively described it, we, Frank said he could get 36. So we did one better, we got 37 with, with the gas easement, 30 without. Yeah, 30 without. So if you do the math, that's 3.5 spaces per unit, if, if want to attribute that to, to each townhome, since we had that discussion last time. So other than that, we changed a little bit of labeling just to better reflect. If you want to go back to the site plan, please. I know it's hard to see here, but hopefully you can see it in your packet to better reflect that there is that perimeter landscaping buffer that we talked so much about last time with its enhanced plantings and fencing and berms and changed planting standards for better opacity and better plant rate ratings. We changed that labeling so that it's very clear that it's the perimeter buffer plus the interior setback for a total of 35 feet along Mr. Co's adjacency. Remember, we talked about that at length back in January, so that labeling's been addressed. The labeling has been changed to include the provision of the berm inside those areas. Also in the narrative of conditions that are included here, I added the commitment that those berms, Madam Mayor, would be installed at initial site development, not later. I know that was an important point that you wanted to see to ensure that those didn't happen, you know, down the road, once the houses were already up, since their whole point is to help aid in, in privacy screening and in water rerouting, if, if that ends up being necessary. So we added that.
And how tall are the berms?
Uh, so that, that is a function of the width, but I reviewed the record today and what we said last time, which is still the case, is that along the street of Ivy Road, because it's an eight foot width, Frank was expecting that they would be two feet tall at a minimum. He might, he said, because the road curves, as you can see, it curves up and we have some additional width as we get closer to the driveway. So we will be able to widen that berm in places and that will of course, in turn heighten the berm, but at a minimum, it'll be two feet. And then along the southern boundary that, as we've called it, adjacent to Mr. Co, that's a 20 foot wide landscape buffer, which gives us the opportunity for a four foot tall minimum berm. And of course, in areas that that can be greater, we will. But what that does is gives a nice, I think Frank said, four foot wide, you know, planting tabletop, because we do want to be able to accommodate those eight foot tall evergreens that we've committed to. And then a two to one slope going down on each side. So that's, that's how that math has arrived at. So with that, I believe that's all the changes. Frank, please correct me if I'm wrong, Andy Chad. And of course, we're happy to answer questions and dive into any detail on that. But I just want to emphasize that I believe, you know, the, if, if I may cast my categorization of the discussion last time, we wanted to, there was a lot of concern about the ability to not create a parking lot or an over congested development due to, due to too many cars either on the street or overflowing the visitor areas. So we wanted to accommodate that with, with better parking opportunity. And could that really be done in the ways that, that Frank kind of ad hoc described at the podium? So we did, we did put that on paper. It's been vetted now. We were able to keep all of our compliance with your ordinance requirements that had already been reviewed and approved. And in addition, keep all of our commitments that we made to neighbors, to the planning board, to the TRC process and to you last time. So we've been able to cover all the bases and, and put a plan on paper now that, that shows you in actual tangible way that those additional parking spots can be achieved to be responsive to your concern and your experience and your community and other developments that townhomes without enough parking aren't a good idea. So we're, we're pleased to have been able to respond to that and actually deliver on Frank's quick thinking that he, he put forth back in January.
What is the length of the driveway up front?
As I believe I saw, he's got it at 16 feet long now, is that right?
Want to confirm the sidewalk on the north side?
I'll just let you come up, sorry.
I didn't think there was a sidewalk.
He, he was talking north, south, so I'm going to let him come up and better explain that.
Good evening. Frank Cantrell, Charlotte, North Carolina. Up along the south side where we don't have a sidewalk, it's from the back of the curb to the face of the garage is 30 feet. On the side that we have.
30 feet?
Yes. On the side that we have the sidewalk, it's 20 feet from the back of the sidewalk to the face of the garage.
They're not 16.
Not 16.
60 feet wide though.
That's where I was getting 16, thank you.
And is the, do the garages, do they, okay, I know there's this like, uh, uh, push or whatever for people to have economical vehicles and all sorts of things, but people still drive trucks. They lift off the ground. So it was interesting because someone was telling me they had gone to stay in an Airbnb somewhere and it was in a townhome. And they said, my truck wouldn't even fit in the garage. So does the, do, do the garages accommodate a full size vehicle? That's my question.
I don't believe that they have the complete architecture completed for these units, but the typical, typical garage depth is 20 feet. So a four door sedan fits in it easily. I know my pickup truck fits in my 20 foot garage easily and I've got a full size pickup. If I was to put a bumper hitch on it, then no, but I don't have a bumper hitch on mine, so mine fits in my garage.
It's, it's seems strange to me that I have to ask that question now, but I don't, seems like that, that, that's like a new thing that people are doing. And I guess until you try to fit that vehicle actually in a garage, you don't realize that they're not making garages large enough for full size vehicles anymore. And I just find that, I found that a little strange, but.
All of these will be two car garages.
Okay.
With, with the driveway.
Even though you show on there only one car in the unit.
That was just a graphical thing, just to show that it would fit in there.
It will actually hold two cars side by side. And then you have another four in your own, on your own property.
Yes.
Right. And we wanted to depict it that way because we talked a lot last time about.
Looks like a parking lot, yes, I understand that.
Hold on, let's use their.
I, I think the biggest complaints that we seem to get is like, you know, we even had, I think after your meeting, it may, may have been the meeting after, the meeting after, like just a little bit after your, the first time you came, people came because they put up through the HOA in a different neighborhood was complaining about all the parking on the street and that you couldn't get vehicles through there. So they put up parking, no parking signs up, and they were pretty upset about that. And you know, that one of, I remember one of the, one of the citizens said, so I'm never supposed to have a party. I can't ever have people over to my place, basically, because I only have room in front of my house for two cars. So you know, I hope you understand that we're giving you feedback based on the feedback that we're getting. And so we welcome development to come. We need development to be able to come, but it needs to be responsible development that takes into account that the majority of people do drive, they don't ride bikes. And they have, especially in units that you have, I, I guess I had, would feel a little bit better about not having so much parking if it was more of a mixed use. You had one bedrooms mixed in with two bedrooms, mixed in with three bedrooms, but all of your units are three bedrooms. So logically, I can think that there's going to be children, maybe of driving age, which is going to multiply the cars exponentially. So I, I think you avoid all of that, you know, frustration. I mean, Bonnie can certainly speak to it, being a HOA president of their parking in front of my house. You know, they're pulling up on the sidewalk and I can't get on, I can't walk my dog on the sidewalk. Just numerous, numerous complaints. So I'm glad you've made some changes because you know, genuinely, at the end of the day, we are trying to help you guys make a better project, one that you're not going to have frustration with as well. So it's coming from a good place is what I'm trying to say, so.
One of the, one of the big points that we changed because of your all's suggestion was going to the 31 foot wide road.
Yeah, and that was done after planning board.
You know, having the HOA saying that there's no parking on the road. If they do occasionally park because of parties, folks should still be able to get around them.
And it's just impossible to police. I mean, people say, oh, you know, it's all nice and looks great on paper. And it's just impossible to police. I mean, people say, oh, you know, it's all nice and looks great on paper, but people are gonna do what they're gonna do. They're gonna have trailers. They're gonna have RVs from time to time. And, you know, you become that neighbor that is either hated by your other neighbors because you're constantly calling the police out there. Or you're unhappy being there because you feel like you're always, you can't get through to your private property. So, you know, to just, I think it's definitely worth us making revisions to have everyone at the end of the day say, if I can park, you know, what you said, on average, three-point-five vehicles easily and some as much as six vehicles on their own private property, then hopefully that will keep the neighbors happy.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, go ahead.
No, we do appreciate that feedback and that's why I wanted to incorporate it. And, you know, we're not here asking you to approve it with just the wider street or just the additional visitor or just the, you know, bigger driveway. We did all three of those things because you're right. You know, we can't think, we can't predict there will be a party one night. So we wanted to take every best practice available that we thought of last time and implement them all. And so that's what this plan reflects. Thank you for that feedback.
The other question I had was about the retention pond. I know it shows green there, but is, Erin, what's the kind of retention buy, sell? Are you guys considering doing anything like that to keep that space green?
It's below the green. It's because the active space.
Oh, yeah, okay, that's the active space. Is that like a walking trail?
It is.
Okay.
The intent of the stormwater basin there is going to be a sand filter. And the sand filter, by state requirements, we have to sod them now. So it'll be green. It'll have to be maintained by the HOA, but it'll be sod.
Yeah, I like them so much better. I think that they're just, I know they're a little bit more up front, but it's like, at the end of the day, I feel like it's so much better for visually and everything else. I really appreciate you guys doing that. I think that was a big, it's a big improvement that I know, like, once you build it and you leave and it's like not on your mind, but to the people that stay there and the residents that will live there, I think they will appreciate that natural space much better than having a big mosquito-ridden pond.
Thank you.
Especially at the end of that area there, you know.
Right, it's in our usable area, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
I think it'll be nice. And right by the walking track, I think it'll be good as well. And so you did get approved through Dener, right?
The Army Corps of Engineers.
Right, so you didn't have to map any wetlands or anything like that, right? Okay, and with a question about that. I had a question about lighting. You didn't show any lighting on here, right?
I don't believe so. But since it's a public street, we will have, not they put any lights on it, it'll be the streetlights. It will be a maximum distance of one-hundred-and-eighty feet alternating on either side of the road.
And thirty-one feet wide roads, right?
Correct.
Excuse me, Mayor. If I could jump in real quick, I had made this note prior. So the public streets, that was a suggestion that was recommended by planning board. As far as staff, we were fine with it being private. We, we wouldn't, we wouldn't necessarily recommend it be public over private. However, if council does decide to move forward with approving this project, we would ask that in your motion that you, that you require that the, the roads, including the whiffs, because I think you're showing forty-nine foot wide, I think ours is actually fifty. We would need to have our TRC approve it because Burton, um, reviewed it as a private road. Where if you're going to approve it as a public road based on the recommendation by planning board, we would want TRC to approve it post-council meeting.
Okay, which, well, that does change things a little bit, not necessarily in a bad way, but things to consider is when it's a private road, would they have still been requesting trash pickup? They have had dumpsters.
We would not, we would not pick up trash on the private road.
Right, so that, that's, is there a reason that you're going from private to public?
Because we were asked to do so by the planning board. And so.
I don't know why they asked you to do that. We prefer free to be private.
Yes.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we'll reiterate our statement from January, which is that we'll leave that to the council's preference. We're fine either way.
I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna build it to public road standards.
Right, correct.
Make any difference to this public or private.
Staff would be happier with them being private over public, so.
Appreciate your input. Was there anything, I'm sorry, I didn't bring my list with me from the previous meeting because it's been so many months. But do you remember if there was anything else other than the parking? Will the, will the lighting that's on there on the streets be? What, do you know what the lighting's gonna look like in that area?
It'll.
Do you mean all?
Like the general residential lighting, I believe.
Duke Energy.
Yeah, they would have to conform. They would conform with Duke Energy's.
They have, I think, three different prototypes they let you choose from.
Residential carriage light, whether they purchase them or rent them, that's what they use.
I guess I was just asking because guys sit way up on the hill and I know like, Mr., oh, yes, it sits down here. I just, can you just take into consideration?
We can, and in fact, now it's all shoebox lighting, which means that it's cut off. It's not that.
Not gonna be.
Right, so the shoebox lighting is better at that light pollution.
That's what I wanted to hear.
And then the other thing that will help, Mr. Coz, I know that we're planning the type of trees that you guys requested, the Primera.
Cryptomaria.
Cryptomaria. It'd have to be eight-foot tall to start with. I believe they go to sixteen feet high, which would help diffuse any.
On top of a four-foot berm.
And they start at what?
We're planning eight-foot, starting out at eight-foot.
You have the list from, that we, that you wrote down from last time?
I do.
You addressed everything on there. I'm sorry, I have that list, but I failed to bring it with me. I apologize.
Yes, I believe that we have. That's our, that's our intent tonight to have brought back what you asked for, which is, you know, improved parking opportunity and access. The commitment about the time of the berm installation.
Yeah.
You know, on the record, the heights of what the, what the minimums are. I think that, you know, the, the status of the roads was a question mark last time. So if the, if the consensus is private, we'll offer that on the record.
Where would you be putting the dumpster pads?
They would be rolled out in the garage, just like whether they were public or private roads.
Oh, so you would still just have, have somebody come by privately and pick those up? Okay.
They would just have to contract individually.
Okay.
Whatever event we would like to use.
It's just.
That's all my questions.
Bonnie?
Well, I think we did have some questions about and had requested that you reduce the density a little bit because you're only building on that small section of land. Because everything's going to be kind of congested in there. And I think we brought that up last time about, you know, I had asked you, how many acres are you actually building on? And you said you didn't know, but just looking at it, I would say it's, you know, you're losing some acreage in the unusable, as you called it, I think a panhandle.
Panhandle.
It's called it, right? So, you know, and we had asked, asked you about reducing the number, you know, so it wouldn't, wouldn't be so congested. But I didn't never hear anything about that addressed, so.
Yes, ma'am, and I didn't, I didn't mean to not list that. I guess my thought was, you're right, we did. We had a long discussion about it, about the acreage calculation. And so I thought we had finished that conversation, but I'm happy to, you know, reopen it if we need to. So to be clear, the panhandle's not unusable. You know, it's not a wetland. It's not, it's not that it's not usable. It's that for efficiency and, you know, following the mantras of more of a cluster subdivision, we're focusing the development in an area that, you know, best makes use of the infrastructure expenditures, the extensions and the linear length of things. And then we're keeping the panhandle as part of the project rather than lopping it off and selling it to a neighbor who may want to develop it. We're keeping it and it's committed to this site plan and thereby it becomes a buffer to those single-family homes along Ivy Road. And I think that is an important contribution where, to your, if we weren't building on it, we, we could sell it. It could be usable to somebody else, so, but we wanted to keep it a part of the project in the discussion we had last time. And I certainly understand, and we talked about this before, that mathematically, I hear what you're saying and I appreciate it. My concern at applying that standard tonight is that that's not, that is not the density calculation standard. So I, you know, it would concern me to apply that here as a, as a way to say that for some reason, the density isn't, isn't being compliant. So I think that that panhandle space does contribute to not only the project as a whole, but, but to the proximate community by creating that, that breathability, that buffer along Ivy and creating the opportunity for preserving the walking trails, which was a direct comment and question that we got from our neighbors.
How many dwelling units per acre is it?
It's four-point-six.
Which is within the ordinance. I'm just concerned about it being all in one.
I think, I think, I think the, I think it's almost like the problem with the, with the rule rather than the application because the, the rule says three to six dwellings per acre. But it's, you have a totally different project if you have, you know, dwelling units that are one-bedroom versus dwelling units that are all three-bedroom. And you say, I mean, you know what I'm saying? So it's, it's like a totally different. I mean, it's, it's, it's such a, a different standard almost that you have to go by when it, you know, to just say, well, that's a dwelling unit and it's going to generate this much traffic coming in. It's going to generate this much trash. It's going to generate this much pedestrian walking on, you know, walking the neighborhood, cars, parking, all of these things. But yeah, I mean, I, I understand what you're saying, but it's like, almost like, I mean, we obviously inherited these, these rules. And it's like, when people make the rules, they're not thinking of the different ways they can be applied, so.
Well, right, so.
Blaming you.
No, I, I hear you.
And I would, it's concerning when you have that many vehicles. I mean, it's what, twenty? Twenty-nine, is that right?
Twenty-nine and.
Twenty-nine times, let's just say, four.
So the trip rate in the ITE for single-family attached at PM peak is point-five-seven. So that's sixteen-point-five trips in the PM peak. So it's, you know, I understand this may be an inflammatory phrasing, but it is very de minimis insignificant tripation in the scheme of things.
Well, and, and I think the thing that makes me feel more comfortable about it is that it's not tied into anything else. It's its own separate development. And if people want to live in there, when they, when they go into purchase and they see houses that have already, or townhomes that have already sold and they see four or five cars out front, they know what they're buying. I mean, theoretically, they are foreign buyers and they can use their vision to see this is what they're gonna get. And if that's what they want to do and, and they want to live more efficiently and have not yard maintenance and all that kind of stuff, I mean, there's, there's some benefits to owning a townhome, obviously. And so that, you know, it is what it is, but I do think that if it was like, you had to go through an established neighborhood necessarily and you're gonna be generating all this traffic now, you know, that we get a lot of complaints about that. They're like, our road used to be a quiet little road and you built, you know, not us, not this council, but previous people allowed, you know, a thousand, you know, homes to be developed on a very quiet road. There's obviously going to be frustration from the existing neighbors about that, so.
And that's exactly, we talked about this last time, so we didn't, but that's exactly why, you know, when we talk about land use planning, putting something like this right on the thoroughfare where it's on and off without impacting, you're right, other residential streets or other homeowners who didn't buy into that scheme. That's why this type of location makes sense for this type of land use. So I agree with you.
You have any questions, Bonnie? Bobby?
Come on.
Let's see, who else in the audience would like to speak? Thank you so much for being here tonight. Problem, Erin? Hi, sir, how are you?
Good. I don't need the monitor. I don't have any PowerPoint.
You'll just state your name and your address for our clerk.
My name is Jeff Benes and I live on East Gilbert Street. I'm a neighbor of Mr. Glenn Patterson's back there. I want to thank the council for allowing me to speak this evening. I moved to Graham thirty-five years ago from Santa Clara County, California. Right in the middle of Silicon Valley. Now, why would someone do that, right? That's a pretty, pretty choice place to live, Silicon Valley, right? A lot of money there, a lot of activity going on. Why would a guy move to Graham? Anybody guess? Quality of life, quality of life. It took me a lot of research to find Graham, right? I kind of liked the name, but one Saturday morning, I woke up and there's, there's eight feet between the houses in Santa Clara County, eight feet. I had four feet and the guy next to me had four feet. I don't know who it was. Nobody knew their neighbors back then, right? I lived next to people for six, seven, eight years, never knew who they were, right? One morning, I woke up seven o'clock in the morning on a Saturday, went into my neighbor's bedroom to open up the curtains like this. Seven o'clock in the morning and just exactly at that same time, my neighbor did the same thing. We both opened our curtains at the same time and there we are looking at each other in our boxer shorts. And I said, I gotta get out of here. In the summertime, I could sit in my living room and the telephone would ring. And of course, at that time, we had telephones on the wall, had landlines. So I'd go answer the phone. I'd pick it up and it's still ringing. It was my neighbor's phone, right? The quality of life wasn't there. The money was there. The glamour was there. It was fast. Everything was there except the quality of life, right? It was horrible, right? My question to the city council is, what are you doing to Graham's greatest asset? Which is quality of life, right? Look, look, look at Meban, right? When I got here thirty-five years ago, the only thing with Meban was downtown Meban, right? Look at it now. You drive down Jimmy Kerr Road, because I work part-time at ACC, I go down there every day. And you got those nice, nice homes there. You look over the trees and the farms are now subdivisions, all right? And I understand growth and I understand prosperity, all right? But I don't understand reckless growth, right? Which, which happens in a lot, a lot of cities, right? I applaud the council and the Tally family for the fantastic job that you all are doing downtown Graham, right? That place is revitalized. I know a lot, a lot of North Carolina towns and it's just crumbling onto itself. Even, even the city of Burlington downtown, it's, it's, it's good, but it's not like this. This is vibrant, right? So, so, so you all have got a vision of Graham to protect its heritage and its culture, which is quality, all right? This is not quality, all right? I find voting positively to put twenty-nine units on six-point-two acres. You know, I pass that corner at least four times a day. It's a postage stamp. It's, it's a little bit bigger than downtown Graham's courthouse square, right? It's tiny. I find it inconsistent with what the city council, the vision that I see, you all want. You want quality. You want a good place for neighbors to live. You want to protect the heritage. This is not, this is Newark, New Jersey stuff, all right? To be, to be perfectly honest with you, all right? But it's not just the twenty-nine units, and I heard the number, and you did a fantastic presentation. I mean, I'm, I'm impressed. It's not a matter of can it be done? It's a matter of should we do it, all right? We, we, we've got the technology to do a lot of things, but are they in our best interest to do them, right? We've got the technology to do a lot of things, but are they in our best interest to do them, right? What are we doing to the city? It's not just the 29 units that are going to be crammed in, right, into this area, but it's the fallout. Let's think two or three years down the road. What about the fallout? What kind of fallout am I talking about? Increased crime, okay? And all you got to do is look at Ivy Glen Apartments, all right? We had to set up a police substation over there with as many calls as we get there. It's highly densely populated and when you put people together so closely, you get frustrations, you get domestic disturbances, you get suspicious neighbors, things like that. And you get their friends coming in from Durham, which we had last year, a shooting. The guy that did the shooting didn't even live here, lived in Durham, but his friends all live in the Ivy Glen Apartments.
I appreciate you, your comments. I have a couple of things that I think we can address. I don't believe that since we've been elected, we've approved any apartment complexes. Is that correct? This isn't an apartment complex either. It's a townhome development. This is what we have to go by. This is what our 2035 comprehensive plan is. And so we have certain rules in here that developers go by in order to be able to present to council what they want to develop in Graham. So this was made long before this council ever got elected. So we have to, you're absolutely right that I think that we've done a lot since being elected to try to curb density. There's been several projects that we felt were way too dense and we have a lot of concern about density. The density on this project, the rules for suburban residential is three to six dwellings per acre. I didn't make that rule and just like I explained earlier, like Bonnie's concern and quite frankly, I think every person on this council, I mean, the reason why Joey ran for office is because he's an example of, my road was very quiet and nice and you could walk on it and your kids could play basketball on the street and all of that. And then thousand homes get built behind him. And now it's a thoroughfare, you know, it's I 40 running to those places. And the reason why we're going to lose a great council member is because he's moving. And where is he moving to? He's going to be moving to something that has acreage and that somebody can't build right on top of them. So, I mean, I think this council is the most united in those efforts. But, and we did not accept this project as it came to us. We said, we have concerns about density, parking, berms to protect the neighbors. And they're basically going to be, what they're proposing is this development of 29 townhomes, which it's not going to be like apartments. Apartments you rent for, I don't know, $1,500 a month. I think the starting prices on these are estimated to be, was it three? Yeah, 300,000, that's what I had written down. So hopefully that won't attract any kind of crime. But, you know, believe me, we are on the same page about preserving the quality of life here. And we're very, we consistently will make turned down projects that we feel are not harmonious with the existing neighborhood. They have made a lot of changes to this project, which has made it better than it was first presented. And the reason that I, even though I don't particularly personally like the density, I would not want to personally live there. But this is a, I can't vote based on my personal feelings about where I would prefer to live or, and I don't think any council members here can. I think we have to look at, does it meet the requirements that we're telling developers that we're willing to accept as a city? And this is not, this is not written by council members, it's approved by council members. But this gets, they have many, many meetings. And this is supposed to be a reflection of what the community has said that they want. There are certain areas that they want and they want certain requirements in the downtown. They want certain requirements regarding industrial development, certain requirements dealing with areas that deal with commercial development, multifamily, all of those are in here. And, you know, people, even though we might love for it to stay wooded, people have a right to be able to develop their property. And so I'm happy to hear anything else that you have to say about, you know, if there's anything that they're proposing that isn't allowed in here. Because I've looked over it and I think we're somewhat limited until this gets redone, which we're actually in the process of doing. And I strongly encourage you to come as a community member to, you know, maybe us come up with some other measurement other than dwellings per acre and do something more along the lines. I don't know, Aaron, I don't know if you know of anything in other cities that they do, but something that would be more reflective of, you know, how many people are going to be occupying that space? Like with three bedroom versus two bedroom versus one bedroom versus, you know, it's a very different scenario when you take 10 acres of land and you put 29 single family homes on it that are three bedroom versus 100 townhomes that are three bedroom versus 150 apartments that are three bedroom. So you get very different results. And so the land use requirements here, that's what we have to go by. That's what we inherited, but we are making efforts to make changes to that in the future. And we always welcome input from our community to be able to.
I appreciate your comments and I've just got a couple other things to say, right? You're the city council. You can say yes or no, regardless of what the book says, right? Right? You're not tied. You make the decision, all right? When you talk about what does the community want? Has anyone talked to the cows? I know some folks have and has anyone on the council talked to the cows? Okay, they're neighbors of mine, right? And I spoke to them, all right? And they are not in favor of this. And Mrs. Coe was almost in tears when she was talking to me. And she says, well, what can we do? They're just going to do whatever they want to do. They've lived in that house for 60 years, all right? And if we want to develop and be prosperous, you know, replace the two homes that are on there or maybe put four. But you're going to put 29 townhomes, all right, not apartments, 29 townhomes, figuring two people per townhome, that's 58 people right next door to them, right? On 6.2 acres of land. I did a little research, right? All right? If someone were to put horses on 6.2 acres of land, you'd be limited to three to six horses. That's it. Because each horse requires one to two acres of land, all right? And we're going to put 58 people with personalities and cars. And we're talking about people not parking on the road, right? People are going to park on the road and that's just too easy road, right? You cannot park on that road, right? There's not enough room to park. People are going to do it and the police are going to be called and there's going to be civil disturbance down there, all right? The citizens of Graham count on this council to make the right decisions, all right? We've already got two major developments going down East Gilbert Street. There must be at least 400 homes there. I didn't count, but there's a bunch, right? I understand the investor, and it might be you, I don't know if it is you or not, lives in Charlotte, right? He doesn't live here, right? I've been here 35 years. I love this town, right? He doesn't love this town, he lives in Charlotte. I'm not sure if the investor is going to buy one of those 29 homes and live there and move from Charlotte. I doubt it, all right? This is an investment deal, all right? It's not what's good for the community. You all are charged with doing what's right for the community, right? That's where you earn your money, right? Regardless of the book and regardless of all these other things, you make the final decision.
Sir, if I can interject, the townhomes are the homes that are being built now and the apartments that were built down there was approved by a prior.
Yeah, I just said that because it's highly dense and there's a lot of crime.
And we can't control what they've approved. Once it's approved, it's approved.
Right, but we're talking about this one. We're not, forget about the Ivy Glen, right? Forget about that. I'm talking about the Gilbert piece of property, all right? The residents of Graham are going to have to live with your decision, like Ms. Cowe said. You know, what can we do?
Can I just explain to you? When someone, if you came up here and you requested us to look at your project, we have to do, legally, we have to do what's consistent. So when you say we don't have to go by this book, literally in our motion, we have to state what section of this book that we're using to either approve or deny the property that's being, the development that's being proposed. So we absolutely have to go by this book.
So why do we have to put on it then? If it's.
We can change the book, but you have land use, you have a land use map and a land use book in order to be able to say that you treated everybody fairly, that you applied the rules to everyone fairly. You can't say, I'm going to, I like Bobby and so I'm going to approve his development and it has the same density as Bonnie's, but I'm not going to approve her development. You have to be consistent. And so if there's something in here in the land use development or in the development ordinance, this comprehensive plan, then, you know, I'm happy to look at that. But the things that you're speaking about with density for this particular area, legally, it does meet that definition. Do I agree with it or like it personally? Maybe not, but I can't as one person change what an entire community approved, if that makes sense.
I understand. And I didn't take issue with, can it be done? Does it meet all the requirements? Army Corps of Engineers, I mean, holy cow. I mean, I think every I and every T's been crossed, right? But the council can say, yes, this is good for Graham or no, this is not good for Graham, all right? You can do that, all right? And that's what I'm proposing. I am totally against putting 29 units on that small piece of property, totally against it, all right? I know the Coes are as well, all right? It's up to you guys to decide. If you approve it, we're going to get it and we're going to have to live with it, all right? And it diminishes the quality of living in Graham by just a little bit more. If you're going to do that, why don't you just tear down the Bank of America building and talk to Hampton Inn and put a five-story Hampton Inn there, right? You might as well do that too and get rid of the Graham Cinema because you can get Regal to come in and put a five complex theater in there, right? It's the quality of life. I go to Colonial Hardware at least once a week. I don't have to, I could go to Lowe's. I mean, I could go to Lowe's and get my 10% military discount. Colonial Hardware doesn't. I actually pay more to go Colonial Hardware. You know why? It's the quality, it's the quality of life. So the message is, you know, dollars, increased tax revenue, you know? Let the investor make some money and live in Charlotte or quality of life for the people who've been here for 60 years. I'm a newcomer, I've only been here 35. There's people here longer than I have. It's quality of life and that's.
And I very much appreciate, you know, your passion, you coming here tonight to speak to us. I don't think there's a council member on here that doesn't agree that we want to maintain a good quality of life. And I assure you that we're making efforts to do so. I don't think that we've ever had so much interest in people developing here. So I don't know that this is really reflective of, you know, the pressure that we're under because this so much development is coming. I don't know that we've ever had this much interest in really coming to North Carolina. I think it didn't rate like in the top five or something of states now that people want to move to. So there's a lot of pressure, you know, nobody can afford anything in Raleigh anymore and nobody can afford Greensboro or Winston-Salem. So obviously, the smaller communities like Graham are feeling the pressure for housing. And just this past month, we were fighting the legislature because they were proposing to take away, in my opinion, everybody's right to be able to even vote on this. They're under so much pressure at the state that they want to be able to say, we're going to build apartments all through North Carolina and we don't care what the local community says. And that's a fact. And I made phone calls, Megan's made phone calls, this entire council signed a resolution saying that we're against that piece of legislation that would take away your rights. Because at the end of the day, you know, my argument to the general counsel there at the school of government was, no one's going to drive to Raleigh to fight a development. So they're all going to get built with no input from our local community. And they can just build whatever they want and build it the cheapest, you know, and with the cheapest materials and everything. And just put it in and like you said, we'd all have to just live with it. So we've done, I feel like, a lot of work behind the scenes to try to make sure that we are preserving our local community. And, but I can't even make an argument that says that this is going to hurt. You know, there's a section here that you can sometimes generically apply that says the new development needs to be harmonious with the existing neighborhood. It doesn't connect to an existing neighborhood. So you can't use that as a reason to be able to legitimately, you know, necessarily deny that request.
How could you say there's no neighborhood?
I'm saying there's, like, it really doesn't connect to an existing, other existing homes that are on that same road. It's going to have a separate entrance going into their own kind of community, community buried off, so.
But it's sure connected to the coast place because they live right next door to it. I mean, he's going to look at it.
The land abuts, but the road does not connect. Their road going into their community is, and trust me, I wish you would have been here for the first meeting because the reason why the buffers are there, the reason why the berms are there, the opaque landscaping plan. We asked them to come back to get this, you know, this, we've added a lot of specifications and requirements for them in order to protect the neighbors like Mr. Coe. And I don't, I mean, I don't hear from the rest of the council, but they've made a lot of changes from the original proposition that they've presented. That being said.
But they didn't change the density. And it's, to me, it's ludicrous.
But we did ask, but we did ask them to. We did ask them to.
It's like putting 10 pounds in a two-pound bag, you know?
I understand what you're saying, but they could have done six dwelling units. They're at 4.6. Legally, they could have done six. They had the land that was built.
If you all let them do it.
But there are individuals who will move to Graham, who will live in townhome because they don't want to live in a single family.
I'm sure it could get built. I'm sure they all get sold and I'm sure a whole bunch of people will be happy and I'm sure a whole bunch of people won't be happy, right?
You're absolutely right.
So you know what my message is, right? Preserve the quality that is Graham's greatest asset, right? And I hope you all make the right decision. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you, I appreciate you being here tonight. Does anyone else that would like to speak? Yes, sure. State your name and your address, sir.
My name is Frankie. I'm trying to move to Graham. I got something on agenda today too about rezoning a lot. But I just got a question because I work in the construction field and I work in Raleigh Holly Springs area and Apex, Pequay and all that. And I tell you, it's grown like 100%, like millions of houses there and which I love it because it puts me to work. But I don't like it because it's taking away the wildlife and all that. And I grew up in Meban, I lived in Meban until I was 30 years old and I moved to Graham. My first question is, have they done the research in that neighborhood? I lived in the Pines Apartments for seven years. Pines Apartments, not even half a mile from that place. I've seen murders, I've seen robberies, I've seen carjackings, I've seen shootings. I've seen people sitting in the car waiting on people to come outside and just to shoot them when they walked outside. I've seen a man arguing with his wife and shoot into the, I lived on the third floor, she lived next. She lived next to me. Shoot through my door, shoot through her door, just to get over there. Just the other night, we just had a shooting in Sarah Williams, which is a low-income neighborhood, and they're not even half a mile from this neighborhood. And they, you know, all this, then you got the Ivy Glen Apartments, then you got the apartments on the hill up there by the food line. This whole road is nothing but full of, and apartments right across the road from where they're talking about building, 'cause my aunt-uncle used to own that land. Well, it got repossessed by the Bane, 'cause they don't pay the bills, but that's beside the point. And they asked for 300,000. My question is, have they looked at the situation about the neighborhood? And they asked for 300,000. Are they gonna put up something? 'Cause I done the apartments in Meven, townhomes, I call them apartments. That's all they are, is just apartments. It's high-end apartments. In Meven, they built them down there off of Sam Wilson's farm, down there. And one person come in and bought every unit in that whole strip. Seven, eight units in that one strip, before they put a stop to it, and turn around, put for-rent signs on it. And guess what? You got moved in there. Anybody and everybody. So, have they, this question is, are they gonna put a thing up where somebody, an investor from New York can't come in and buy all these apartment, townhomes, and turn around and rent them all out, or to that nature?
I doubt seriously that somebody could afford to spend 300,000.
They will.
I think it'll be-
They will. They do it in the Holly Springs, uh, and Pequay Arena all the time. They do it all the time. They come in. You don't know how many millionaires that live in this county, state, right now. I got a 37-year-old guy doing a house sale right now, so he's got 50, made 52 millions in less than a year.
Well, we, we have inherited from previous councils some townhome developments, and that hasn't happened there.
Yeah, I'm just saying, like, from what I've seen in, like, the neighborhoods I go to, you got investors come in and buy, and rent them out, and they be for sale, sold, then next day you got a for-rent sign on every one of them. So, that's what I was saying, they, you know, are they gonna try to put something-
This council's not approved any.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, like, I'm just saying, like, townhomes, it's townhomes. They do that. They buy the townhomes and turn around and rent them out.
Well, all I can say is, if somebody has the money where they can buy all those units at 300,000 apiece, I can imagine-
Oh, they do.
-they would rent them for. They're not gonna rent them for-
Yeah.
-lose money.
I know. I know. That's just what I'm saying, like, are they gonna put a, in the paperwork about that situation?
Of course, if somebody can rent a townhome for the price of a mortgage, hey, they're not gonna let the neighborhood go down to-
Look at the Pines Apartments. That man paid a lot of money for them apartments. Guess what he rented? Well, he rented them for $1,000 a month. So, guess what? And how much low income, how much crazy stuff you see over there? You know, just, that's my question. Have they invested in that neighborhood? Checked the neighborhood, and, but they're buying all apartments at one time?
Yeah.
I mean, relatively speaking, where we're located between Winston and Durham, I feel extremely safe in this area. We very rarely have any kind of
Oh, yeah.
shootings or murders or anything like that in this area. So, I mean, my daughter was in Winston-Salem at school, and every day they have a shooting or murder.
What darn child, so that tells you-
I mean, I think relatively speaking, when you're in Durham, you've got million-dollar homes right beside trailer parks.
Oh, yes. Trust me, you got them right beside the project apartments, so, yeah.
You know, hopefully, as apartments age out, hopefully more developers will come in and re-
That's what I'm just saying, like, you know, that's what they do when they take in townhomes and make them apartments now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it's, you know, we're doing what we can and what we're allowed to do.
What was it? Friday night, Sarah Williams, 36-year-old manager, got shot and stopped right there at the Gilbert Street, right there, sent ties. Police had the whole road blocked off when I came up there, so, same thing. That's what I'm saying. That area right there is nothing but crime-infested, so is that gonna stop, slow it down, or are they gonna put more people over there?
I don't, I personally don't think, at least from my experience, 300,000-townhomes are comparable to the Pines Apartments, but-
Yeah. It used to be. Trust me. It used to be nice over there.
Yeah.
Yeah, then, I, who it is, you know who's there, but-
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak?
Let's please stick to the time limit.
We have a time limit of three, three minutes.
I'll stick to it.
Okay, thank you.
My only comment is, I think this should be done because they've met every requirement you've requested of them.
It's mine.
Streets are wide. I like that that's the best idea of everything that allows for street parking if somebody wants to have a party. They seem to have met every requirement that the city council has asked of them, and I don't see, I mean, you know, hey, I know what he's saying, but we can't just stop every development because we wanna keep Graham little. Graham's not gonna stay little, believe me. But I think this is a good project, and I would like to see it move forward. I'd rather see this than see what I see now. That's all.
Now, Aaron, was there anything in the planning board meeting? I know how they make recommendations. Is there anything that they had recommended that wasn't addressed in this motion?
I believe everything is, has been covered in the motion. I mean, as I said before-
Except for the private run.
Yeah, that's the one thing, as far as staff goes, that we don't have that-
How would you like that to be recited?
I would, I would, I would recommend that it stay private.
No, I know, but how would you want that to be worded in that motion?
That, that, that the roadway remain private.
That the, it doesn't say on here, but it's 31-foot width.
Yeah, and they're still looking to do that width. That's fine.
The last sentence.
Yeah. Okay, so, they're reflecting it on the site plan? So, they would just, we would just recommend that the public on the site plan be changed to private.
Okay, on the last, so, if anyone's gonna make a motion on the last change out public and put private, and it's already reflected on the plan, 31-foot? And what did you say about needing to go to TRC approval?
Stating that if this is something that council is wanting to maintain as public based off of the planning board recommendation, that we request that it be sent back to TRC so that it could be reviewed as public, but since you're not looking to do that, that's a moot point.
And there was one other question that I had. Did we talk about the height of the townhomes?
Those are the other project.
These would, these would only be two, right? Two stories? Yes. I thought we did. I thought they said that on Coe's property, it would only be two.
Yes, ma'am, we did discuss it. They will be two stories, but more importantly, we committed to the height remaining at 35, which is what it already is, and is the same as what Mr. Coe's property could be or if this property were developed under its current zoning. So, we did that for consistency.
So, all the townhomes will be 35, no taller than 35 feet?
Correct. To your point, they are two stories, but the 35 feet gives ample room for gabeling and, you know, architectural treatment.
And Aaron, you've reviewed, I can't read that plan, obviously, from here, but you've reviewed that plan. If it's approved as is, we don't need to delineate any of the other things that we've talked about, the driveway being 30 feet or, or any of that sort of stuff. It's all reflective on that plan as it's being presented. Is that correct?
That's correct.
The berm, the opaque landscaping, all of that, okay? The, what did I say? The eight-foot tamar, maria trees, all that's on there, right?
And the landscaping.
I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, I need a motion to approve or to deny this rezoning?
So, we need to read all of this? I move to approve the rezoning of 6.27 acres, located at Ivy Road and East Galvez Street from R18 Low Density Residential to CR Conditional Residential to construct 29 townhomes that would be consistent with the suburban residential land use type and policies 5.1, 2.2.1, and strategy 4.3.1. It's put forth by the Graham 2035 Comprehensive Plan with the following conditions. Except the updated owner's conditions presented during the meeting requires an eight-foot-tall evergreen tree buffer at the time of planting to supplement the Type C buffer required on the southeastern portion of the property. Planning shall be spaced to 90% of opacity to decrease visibility into the development. In the same southeast portion, a berm is to be installed to divert water away from the neighboring property. Work with the gas company and NC DOT to relocate the driveway further east to provide more space between Stroud driveway and the proposed driveway. The open space grilling area along the Stroud property line is to be converted to undisturbed open space, including the berm on Ivy Road. Street plannings and acceptance of an alternative turnaround approved by the Fire Marshal Stormwater Control- Stormwater Control Measure is to meet the pre- and post-calculation required by the ordinance to require the streets to be private.
I second your motion, Bobby.
Can I? What? Go ahead.
I was gonna add, if we can add that the plan be approved per the site plan minus the labeling of the roads being public, and that would take care of the site-specific items that were covered by amendment.
And on there, does it speak to the bio?
It's part of the site plan that was presented.
Okay, can you just say-
It's the verbiage.
Just to approve based on the
Rezoning based on-
Site plan that was presented
Tonight.
Minus the, the public labeling. Replace that with private.
Right.
I second Bobby's motion.
Okay. He stated it, right? You got it, Renee? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Rezoning of, thank you so much for being here. Have a great day. Rezoning of .51 acres lot, 200 South Marshall Street. I defer to Aaron Holland in this regard.
Thank you, Mayor. This item has been on the agenda for the past few months, has been tabled. As you stated, this is a request to rezon, .51 acres from O.I. to B2. The lot is currently vacant. It's surrounded by a car wash across Marshall Street, the post office across Pine Street, and the bus and dentist's office on the southern property line, and the bus and single-family home on the eastern property line. The B2 zoning district encompasses a range of potential commercial uses that could be perceived as non-neighborhood oriented without certainty of the intended use and the additional uses the district would be. It is difficult to determine whether the proposed zoning change would be consistent with the future land use plan. Planning Board did recommend denial of the project with a vote of 6-0.
Okay. The applicant's not here.
And communicating with Jason Cox. I'm not sure. I don't think I've seen him.
Did he want it taken off the agenda?
I think we should-
No, we need to deny it.
We need to deny it.
Said that in the last meeting, that we're done kicking this little can down the road. Finished, done.
Okay. I guess I'll ask Bob Ward. I did not consider myself to have any kind of, like, conflict in this regard. I own a piece of property on Marshall Street that's way down on the other end. It's not within the limit. I didn't get any kind of notice on this property or anything like that. It's not within, what is it, 500 feet or whatever? It, I don't think anything that would be built there would affect me financially or otherwise or whatever, but I'll just ask for the council to recuse me, let them vote on this the way they wanna vote on this, only because the applicant's not here tonight, so I don't know what his feelings are about it, but yeah.
We need to cut on the mic. If it's reasonably likely to have a direct substantial and readily identifiable financial impact on the council member, you know, if it, if it does, you know, you would, you would need to be recused. But if not, you would not need to be recused.
I mean, I don't, I don't think it does, but, I mean, just to err on the side of caution because the applicant's not here, I'm fine with recusing myself.
Okay, well, that certainly is the council's discretion. I mean, they could, you would ask to be-
I mean, they, we have a full forum, so they don't need my vote either way, but I'm fine with doing that.
But if you wanna formally do it, you can ask, and they could make a motion to-
Make a motion that I recuse myself. Somebody else? Okay.
Oh.
You'll allow me to?
Yes, ma'am. I make a motion that we allow Jennifer to recuse herself.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I, do I need a motion?
Mayor Proten, may I ask that the city council open the public hearing and see if anyone would like to speak?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who are here that would like to speak to?
Yeah, open the public hearing.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor Proten. Could you ask the attorney, perhaps? I don't believe that the applicant's not here to present. I don't, I don't think a public hearing is in order. Based on also the motion that was made from the last meeting, that if he wasn't here, you weren't gonna consider it further.
That makes it even easier.
I, I-
Is that-
I could speak, yeah.
Bob?
There's a hearing. Vote on it, either approve it or deny it.
I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone here that'd like to speak to this case? I make a motion we close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Now?
I make a motion that we deny the rezoning of .51-acre lot located on 2090 South Marshall Street from O.I. Office and Industrial to B2 General Business, and that it would not be consistent with the policies 2.2.1 and 2.3.2 as put forth by Graham's 2035 Comprehensive Plan and the City of Graham Developmental Ordinance since the petitioner is not here, and we don't know what he wants to do with it.
I'll second your motion, Bobby. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, Madam Mayor, if you will, come back?
I make a motion that
We allow-
We allow Madam Mayor to come back into the session.
I second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, moving on to rezoning 1.7-acre lot at Gant Road. A public hearing has been continued to consider rezoning of 1.7-acre lot on Gant Road from I-1 Light Industrial to RG General Residential for the purpose of constructing a manufactured home for living purposes. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this proposed rezoning?
That would be me. I'm trying to get it rezoned, put up like a modular home or double wide there. It's one point seven acres, I'm only cutting off about maybe three quarters of the acre to put the home and I will leave the rest wooded, but up into the other woods that's behind it. They told me I had to be here just in case you had to ask any questions to that nature.
Um, Aaron, can you pull that up?
You see the rectangle right there, it comes down to that triangle?
Yeah.
That's the only part I
Madam Mayor, can I make a motion that we open the public hearing?
I'm sorry, yeah. Um, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
So go ahead.
Yeah, where that little triangle from the Gant Road down, it's coming down, that's the only part I want to take off, the rest I want to leave wooded because right behind that's nothing but woods and wetland. And I want to keep the wildlife over there, which is a lot of deer, a lot of turkeys and all to that nature. And my mother-in-law lives in that thirteen, one, three, one, four, eight, one. Lot right there, it's like an acre or two, so that's maybe the little reason we rezoned it to move aside of her, I got the clearance from thirty foot from the property line from the front, thirty foot from the back, and I'm gonna be thirteen from each side of the property line when I put the property, what, put the home there. So I'm following all the categories where it needs to be to the nature of the planning board when I talk to them. And I got my contractor's Terry Davis, so he's the one doing all this for me, he just want me to come up here.
Are all those mobile homes?
No, they actually, um, thirteen, one, three, one, four, eight, four is a mobile home. Uh, right between that red line and that other line is the City of Graham's property, which is a sewer. And that thirteen, one, four, one is a house, then the thirteen, one, four, eight, zero is a mobile home. Yes, the rest of them past that, past my mother-in-law's is mobile homes, all the way down to the curve. That's a, uh, heap and there company, and right across the road, right at big property is Atlas Welding. So basically, everything on that, yeah, from that, where I want to go from that way is mobile home set for one house.
Aaron, can you bring it up?
It's so, it's so strange to me, Aaron, that okay, so it's all RG, but like basically somebody could come in there, buy up a bunch of those lots and put homes a lot closer than they are, like it's not being used really for RG, even though it's zoned RG all around it.
It's only two properties that is zoned for that light commercial?
Yeah, but what are the setbacks, like how many, I mean, you could put a bunch of trailers or a bunch of tiny homes on all that property, because the setbacks for RG are like a lot of density.
Well, he will only be able to put one structure per lot, and then there's going to be a minimum size requirement of that lot. He couldn't do a mobile home park or anything like that because you had to have a minimum of five acres in order to do a mobile home park.
But I'm saying if someone went in there and bought all that property up, they could do that, right?
They have nice sized lots with tiny homes.
Okay. But that's what I wanted to make sure is that he couldn't, that somebody couldn't come in and do that.
You ain't gotta worry about nobody buying it because she's not gonna sell it.
Okay.
She would not sell it and she left it to her daughters, and they won't sell. Because that property I'm trying to do now is, used to be a mobile home park, and it wasn't rezoned from since nineteen sixty fifty six, so she's been there thirty some years and they got uh, that's the neighbor.
Zoned industrial, weird.
Um, what is that? That's my, that, y'all go up the road a little bit, a long ways, the other way. That's her sister's house, yep, that way, yep. Keep going, keep going, keep going, up past the curve. All right, that's my mother-in-law's house right there, and you can go up there, building this, that's the property right there. And the property goes from that fence line up to that driveway, and that's the city's property after that.
So how, where's your entrance to the property?
Um, go up, where I want to put my entrance is gonna be, back, back this way a little bit, come back. I want to put right there where that fence line is, I want to come ten foot off that fence line and put a driveway right there, off that, where that route is right there, yep.
Are you gonna move that storage?
Yes, that's, all that's gonna come out of there. That was her father that put that there when he was alive. He has an old Camaro inside there. Only thing I would do is clear all that off right there, to that, back to the wood line and replant trees and put a double wide there.
Okay. Everything around is RG, it's more consistent to be RG than it is to be I one. In my personal opinion, is there anyone here that else that would like to speak on this issue, says a public hearing? Okay, I need a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close it.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Need a motion, a second to approve the rezoning, approve or deny?
I move to approve the rezoning of one point seven acre lot on Gant Road from I one light industrial to RG general residential for the purpose of constructing, constructing a manufactured home for living purposes, and that it would be consistent with the current land zone zoning and land use plan for the overall goal of building a structure on the lot, and would be consistent with the suburban residential type and further policy three point three point two and strategy four point three point one as put forth by the Graham twenty thirty five comprehensive plan.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate you, you have a good, have a good night.
Thank you.
Uh, joint annexation ordinance Burlington Graham Racetrack Road, believe Aaron Holland, you gonna have this tabled till August the twelfth meeting?
So it's, it's gonna be up to council. Um, we did hear back from the attorney that council had requested that we reach out to an outside attorney to look over the agreement and MOU. We heard back from them after the packets were sent out. And basically, what was relayed to us was that the agreement as drafted addresses all the key items necessary to be passed. So it had everything in it as it needed to be specific to that particular piece of property while going any further than that property as identified. That was what was
Well, I, I wasn't so concerned about whether it was legal, I mean, I trust that they're not gonna have us execute agreement that's not legal, I want to know in his legal opinion whether that's prudent for us to do so.
But that's, that's gonna be up to council. An outside attorney wouldn't review that based on an opinion for whether council feels it's in the best interest of that particular city to move forward with that agreement or not. What we were asking to do was make sure that there was nothing that was out of line within that agreement, which is what, uh, was, which was what is it done? Any negotiations that we have going beyond this would have more involved conversations, which is what the MOU was added in for, so that we knew coming going forward that we would have more negotiations of the space beyond this particular piece of property.
Well, we have a pretty long agenda, I'd prefer for us to push this to our August twelfth meeting if that's possible. Um, if the rest of the councils can have a consensus of that, if you don't mind. So I'll make a motion that we postpone this to August the twelfth, twenty twenty five, to have an opportunity to review what the outside council gave us. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Text amendment, development ordinance, tobacco, vape, sales. Public hearing's been scheduled to consider the ordinance amendment to Article two, section ten point sixteen, Article four, section ten point one three five, and Article four, section ten point one four nine, to add language to the development ordinance defining and creating a use type for tobacco, CBD, and vape shops. Like to open, this is a public hearing, and if anyone would like to speak on this text amendment, like to make a motion to open the public hearing, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Um, is there anyone here about the vape shop ordinance, text amendment? Okay, not hearing anything from the public, going to close the public hearing. Yep, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I will just say that, you know, effective July one, the state of North Carolina has proposed to, as told vape shops, that it's illegal for them to sell any disposable vapes. So you've seen, um, effective July one, I think they've got the state going out, state inspectors going out now inspecting vape shops to ensure that, um, they're not still selling back stock or whatever, so I don't I don't know if this is, um, uh, correct, but, um, yeah, I'm saying, why, why do they allow the refillable ones and not the disposable ones now? And somebody said, I think that they were using, there was a lot of, I guess, use of the disposable ones over and over, and they weren't like, I don't know, there was some sort of concern about, I was like, well, all of it is a concern, a health concern, so I don't know, and then somebody said, well, they're using the disposable ones to break them apart and using them for, I guess, nefarious reasons or whatever, I was like, well, you, again, I don't, I don't know, I guess maybe the standards for making the refillable ones, you can't do that like you can with the disposable ones, I'm not sure, but I do know that effective July one in the state of North Carolina, and apparently this is some sort of not just national, but actually international push to get rid of vapes altogether. I know in Britain, they've completely gotten rid of it there as well. So, um, the concern, I think, um, that we have is them being, I think, you know, it's the same sort of concerns I think that people have about the this sweepstakes and stuff, um, not being near schools, that sort of thing. I don't know, I'm, I'm just
We table our vision until we see what the effect with state.
No, because I don't think that, yeah, I don't think it, I think this is more in line with what the state's doing too, so there, uh, I guess, you know, when we were younger, they didn't have vapes or whatever, so they're seeing the fallout, the health impacts of vaping. Now, after people have been vaping for, I don't know when that got invented, but like ten years or whatever. So, um, there's a real push, I think, to kind of limit this type of sale, especially to children, especially near schools and stuff, so I think the state's doing some things as well, but, um, I don't have the text amendment in front of me, does somebody have the actual text amendment?
Right on my computer here. There's quite a bit, because they added the special use district B two stuff also, because that wasn't even in there.
So
But that amendment was based off of Burlington's ordinance.
So one of the questions I have for the council is the distance between one to vape shops and another that's primarily selling tobacco products and vape goods, that it would be, are you guys agreeable to the twenty six forty feet or fifteen hundred linear feet?
Twenty six forty. Richard talks to you.
Okay.
I, I don't want them at all, but I want them about, from the center of Graham, about fifteen miles either way.
I agree with that one.
So I guess like, you know, it's kind of like the, um, yeah.
Version one was the text version
So I did
Planning boards, these are planning boards, then version three was in red.
So they were gonna take this out, but then Cameron clarified that knot should have been in there, that it was a typo. And I talked to Dean today, and he was like, yeah, he was fine with putting that back in with the knot in there, but that, um, I guess he was like, how are we going to enforce that in a grocery store? Like in a CVS or a, or a grocery store or a Rite Aid, you know, not a Rite Aid, Rite Aid doesn't exist anymore, right? What, Walgreens, Walgreens, like they have those as, not their primary item for sale, is that right? They're not specifically a tobacco store?
Yeah, and if you go to Food Line, I mean, I, I saw it the other day, right up here where there's, right at the front, an area where you could purchase these items. The challenge is gonna always be enforcement, because a lot of what happens through the chains, the Food Lines, the CVSes, we don't even know they're selling some of that stuff until you go in there. And then that's when you're basically gonna have to check and see whether or not they're outside of the, was it five hundred, I forgot what the
Five hundred square feet.
Or the five percent deal of the gross area, so that stuff would have to then be calculated to see where it meets, because they're not having to come back once they're
But are you looking at the stores, do you see them using more than five hundred square feet now?
I can honestly tell you, I've never measured what I saw, it was more so that I saw it when I was there, like, oh, man, they, they sell this in Food Line now, or wherever. It's not really, I wonder how many square feet this is taking up.
I don't think that I see it taking more than five hundred square feet, but I just
Five hundred square feet is a lot, I mean, you're talking about five fifty, you know, that's a that's a, that's a pretty big space. Especially for a, a place like a grocery store or a drugstore where space, retail space is valuable, they don't necessarily want to give up unnecessary space for items that could be taken up by other things.
Right, right. Okay. Ronnie, you got any questions?
Other than like, like you said, how are we gonna lease that, I don't know.
Yeah, I think like, you know, if it's, if you go in somewhere and you see that half the store is a vape shop, but I do think for like new businesses opening up, the enforcement will come because they will be informed when they go to the planning, um, department, what they can and cannot put in.
Right.
I don't think we have a problem with the existing, um, with the existing, and anybody that is existing would be grandfathered in anyways, for right now. But going forward, as businesses close, they wouldn't necessarily be able to reopen without being under this requirement of limiting that space to five hundred square feet, not being within an elementary, middle, or high school. That sort of thing, so, um, yeah. Any questions, can you question?
Yeah, I would just like to see them go away altogether, but if we can't, this is the, I guess, better than nothing.
I don't know if legally we can do that, I doubt that we can, but
Getting rid of cigarettes, you know?
Restrictions on it, um, I think we'll have I mean, they're getting like Dollar General, I mean, they're just popping up everywhere, I mean,
Exactly.
Uh, just, you go a block and it's another one. Any questions Ricky?
Amen.
Okay. So, uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance amendment to Article two, section ten point sixteen, Article four, section ten point one three five, and Article four, section ten point one four nine, to add language to the development ordinance defining and creating a use type for tobacco, CBD, and vapor shops. And, uh, approve the ordinance amendment as written.
A second.
Original as written?
Plan board recommendations. What you have, are there plan board recommendations there?
Yeah, right, yeah.
So, y'all are, you recommended approval So y'all are, are, you're recommending approval with plan board recommendations.
What were the changes from the original?
It's, it's, um, so it was in red.
Yes, the, the fifteen hundred, yeah, that, yeah.
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 So those are the changes that plan work.
A knot was not in there. They were going to get rid of the whole thing. So that's why I thought that that was wrong to say that. So I will say as written here, because you don't want me to read all that, do you?
Planning board.
Okay.
I would, I would just say.
Well, it, it is, the planning board had recommended taking this out because there was a typo here.
These changes were recommended by the.
Yes. So with the changes of fifteen hundred instead of a thousand in section two, taking a, a rid of, getting rid of K, adding number three that says ends with the twenty six forty feet half mile, and then the destination, that text amendment, adding the knot to under designation under one.
That's perfect. That's perfect right there.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
A circuit motion.
All in favor? All opposed, motion carries. Special use permit, twelve oh five East Harden Street. A public hearing has been continued to consider a special use permit for unified business development for a property located at twelve oh five East Harden Street for the use of a multi-tenant building. Recognize Assistant City Manager Aaron Holland.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for a special use permit for a unified business development heavy for property located at twelve oh five East Harden Street. The applicant has a set of approved plans for a proposed single use building currently. The applicant has requested to turn that building into a multi-tenant use type, which requires the application for a special use permit under the unified business development use. The parcel falls in the corridor, future land use zoning area in the suburban residential corridor. As this is a special use item, there are findings of facts that need to be satisfied. There are six conditions. I'm a, I'm a read the six out. The applicant would then go into more detail when he comes to the podium. Is there all applicable regulations of the zoning district in which the use is proposed are complied with? Conditions specific to each use identified by the development ordinance are complied with. The use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and developed according to the plan as submitted. The use will not substantially injure the value of a jointed property or that the use is a public necessity. The location carried of the use, if developed according to the plan as submitted, will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located and in general conformity with the plan. Other element for the ground planning area and satisfactory provision has been made for the following, when applicable, vehicular, vehicular circulation, parking and loading, service entrances and areas, screening, utilities, signs and lighting and open space.
Okay. Anybody here tonight to discuss this?
So the attorney would need to read a statement prior to as well.
Thank you. Uh, I'm just going to read this statement to try to explain the difference between quasi judicial evidentiary hearing, which is what this is in the legislative hearings that we've had prior to this. So this hearing is a quasi judicial evidentiary hearing. Means it's like a court hearing. State law sets specific procedures and rules concerning how this board must make its decision. These rules are different from other types of land use decisions like rezoning cases. The council's discretion is limited. The council must base its decision upon competent material and substantial evidence in the record. It is, it is a decision that must be based on the standards and ordinance and based on the facts presented. If you will be speaking as a witness, please focus on the facts and standards, not personal preference or opinion. This meeting is open to the public. However, participation is limited. Parties with standing have rights to present evidence, call witnesses and make legal arguments. Parties are limited to the applicant, the local government and individuals who can show they will suffer special damages. Other individuals may serve as witnesses when called by the city council. General witness testimony is limited to facts, no opinions. For certain topics, the council needs to hear opinion testimony from expert witnesses. These topics include predictions about impacts on property values and predictions about impacts of increased traffic. Individuals providing expert opinions must be qualified as experts and provide factual evidence upon which they base their expert opinion. Inadmissible evidence is deemed objected to and for purposes of this hearing are noted to, are noted for the record. Any documentary evidence that is certified or from a recognized professional source with authentic authentication will be admitted. Any documentary evidence that is not certified or from a recognized professional source is deemed objected to for the record. Witnesses must, must swear or affirm their testimony. At, at this time, anybody who wants to be a witness, if they have come forward and take the oath or affirm.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? So help you God, say I do.
Renee. Renee. Okay. Okay. All right. Just wanted to make sure I'm doing it the way you want me to do it. Okay. All right.
If, if, if you don't mind, if you would go ahead, you can poll the council for any bias or fixed opinions, conflicts of interest or any ex parte communications or site visits.
Do you have specific wording that you'd like for me to read? Yeah.
Just, just.
The council have any kind of conflicts in regards to this issue? Have you met or discussed this issue with any applicant or any persons that would render your opinion to be fixed? I haven't spoken with anybody. Have no conflict. I don't even. Can you tell me a little bit about how far down on Harden this is?
Yes, ma'am. My name is Chad Hufman. I'm the civil engineer for the project presenting a special use request tonight. Our address is five oh five East Davis Street in Burlington. I'd like to enter into the record to staff report the approved site plans and then any expert testimony that I myself and my colleague Glenn Patterson will bring to you tonight. I give you a little bit of catch up. This was a rezoning case we did in twenty twenty one. We, at the time, brought a single use tenant building to the council for rezoning request. It was a straight rezoning. I remember specifically being the char, given the charge to make us proud as I left the building. I remember those words. And so five years later, we're trying to do that as best we know how. It has come to a, a time to begin vertical construction of the site, which is located south of town. It is in the overlay district. It's across from Conklin Oil. We've been working that site since the erosion control permit was approved a couple of years ago. Since that time, we've gotten plans approved for the site. It's been vetted and approved by TRC, including the Department of Transportation. When it came time to begin searching for lease tenants and occupants for that building, it was immediately realized that no one needed a building that big in the specific medical office community where we were searching for tenants. So we wanted to use the building for two tenants and we found out from staff that this needed a special use permit in order to have multiple tenants located in the same building. That necessitated our trip through the review process again, and then an appearance here, making the request to you tonight. As part of the record, we previously submitted our responses to the six findings of fact. We're all favorable. The specific item to real estate value, expert witness testimony can be given to you by Mr. Patterson and then commenting on the other five items. I'll be glad to elaborate on any of those you may have questions with.
This is across from Riverwalk, right?
Yes, ma'am.
I say, I mean, it's been years and years and years, people trying to develop that property.
Yes, that was one of our first cases with the new council. And the, I think it was in the fall of that year. Some earth became available due to some projects that came out of the ground in twenty twenty three. So we were able to start filling that property slowly but surely to bring it up to grade, to give it a better sense of curb appeal. It backs up to a flood plain, so we needed to get it above that significantly. There's a lot of vertical retaining wall.
How's it look now?
It's almost done. It's going to look really good.
But I mean, it looks fine after the storm?
Uh, yes, we were well prepared.
That's like a, gonna be a test, a testament as to these flood plain maps, whether they're true or not, because it seems like places that you anticipated flooding. Some places didn't flood at all, and then other places that were not on the flood maps at all, like were, you know, seven, eight feet underwater. It's crazy.
I, I will tell you that just from personal experience, I've been through four of these one hundred year storms or greater. I'm fifty three. I will say that because this particular storm came from the south and east headed north and our Piedmont drainage basins go from the north to the southeast. That, that combined with a slow moving storm, the southern and eastern river basins were already full and nearing capacity before we ever really got any precipitation. So compounding a slow storm with already field conveyances downstream of us. Our water stacks on top of water and, you know, we have flooding in, in plateaus in Graham and in Burlington where the land is broad and gently sloping. And the water can't escape because the, the low lying areas are already full. So it's, it's exactly to your point. You see flooding in places you've never seen before.
Ever seen.
And you realize that's a, a, an anomaly. And then twelve hours later, that flooding is gone. It's the, it is a very strange and it brings to, to light a firsthand witness of flash flooding and how dangerous it is.
Yeah, I, I watched a video in ten minutes, in ten minutes, a, a, a parcel of land that you could walk across became a raging river. I mean, you know, it, it's crazy because people think, oh, I should prepare. I'm like, well, you got ten minutes to do it before you in really big trouble. I, I think the, you know, to actually see how quickly that happens because people do try to react, but ten minutes isn't, isn't a very long time when you're trying to move stuff or move vehicles or, or try to get out of a really kind of dangerous situation. Yeah.
Another brief anecdote that's probably familiar to all of us in the room, the Lindley Mills facility, which is located on South eighty seven in a kind of a interesting geologic formation in Kane Creek, the water elevation from this event was higher than the elevation during the Hurricane Fran event when we were a lot younger. And it is significantly less wind damage, significantly less loss of power. But once something's wet, it's wet and the product that they lose is instantaneous. Once it's wet, but floodwater is gone the next morning. It, it is just the strangest event.
And I told Aaron, we, we met with Fox Eight today and I said, I don't know that our residents were as prepared as they would have been had it, somebody called it a hurricane. Because when, you know, your level of what you're anticipating with a hurricane is, well, maybe even though I'm in the middle of the state, I'm they, because they kept calling it a tropical storm and we're in the middle of the state, we kept thinking we're gonna be okay. We're gonna be okay, you know? And boy, wow. I mean, places that when you started seeing water get up to the interstate that was twenty, thirty feet below, like I was like, wow, what is happening? This is crazy. Yeah, very, very concerning, but appreciate you being here tonight.
Yes, ma'am.
About your project and I'm glad it's going to be okay. I'm glad it's high up on the hill.
We are too. I'm thankful for the continuation from last month. I personally was not able to make it for another council meeting in another jurisdiction. So the grace is much appreciated.
Oh, is it the light blue square?
Yes, sir, it is.
Are you going to use that as your retention pond?
So the answer, short answer is no. That is a legacy pond that we went through proper channels with Army Corps and state of North Carolina to remove that pond and then put one almost right back in its place. So an existing pond.
I think that makes sense.
I, I can't. I, I cannot do it. We, we took the pond out and we're putting a pond right back in its place, which is going to serve the virtually same purpose. But after a year and a half of seeking permits and approvals from both the state and federal level, we were successful in having that pond quotation removed so that we could build an extension of the parking lot and then differently shaped but occupying the same space pond to capture the stormwater runoff from this particular site. And I, I cannot make it make sense.
And, and you're looking at, you said you have a health facility. Is that what you said?
Yes, we've been, it's very similar construction and, and used to the building that's at the Lowe's Food Shopping Center across from Graham Dermatology at the intersection of Fifth Street and Mevin Oaks Road. So if you shop at Lowe's Foods and you go around the corner and head up to Biscuitville at the stoplight, for the longest time, there were two vacant parks.
You're saying Grant?
Dermatology. This is, the companion to this is in Mevin. What I'm trying to do is give you an illustration.
Okay.
UNC Healthcare occupies that office. So it's similar tenants, but it would be multiple tenants.
What is the acreage on that lot?
Uh, just more than four.
One point four?
A little more than four.
A little more than four. Okay. Because it doesn't say it anywhere on here.
Uh, I brought a set of plans if we need to look at those and I did request they be entered in as evidence to the record, but we've, we've got them online too.
Basically what you're asking is we've already approved the building the size you wanted. You just want to subdivide it into two separate.
Almost. It would not be subdivided, but multiple occupants will, will occupy the building. The ownership will remain the same. But we're not able, because of the ordinance, to put more than one rental tenant in that particular building on that particular site.
Is the use.
The ordinance. How, no ma'am. However, the ordinance does allow us in keeping with the zoning to bring a special use request, which brings to light the potential that there would be two tenants and that everyone is aware that there would be common plan of maintenance for the landscaping and the stormwater facilities. And that's, that's probably the most important part for having unified business development. When you enter into that, you realize that I have a neighbor and we're going to be mutually responsible for the place that we occupy. This will be owned by one owner, but the individual building could be segmented or, or compartmentalized for different offices. It's a light industrial use.
Light industrial?
I think that's the current zone.
It, it requires, it requires a special use permit also because i- if this was not a if it was less than two hundred and fifty trips per day, it would be considered a unified business development light, which wouldn't have to go through the special use. This one has a proposed expectation of two hundred and fifty or more trips per day. Therefore, it requires the, the special use approval.
How do you determine that, Aaron?
Based on the expected tenants. We had same situation with, where Miconos is, where is it Autozone? Just think about the, the strip center areas.
Charlie C's.
Yeah. So anything along those lines is based off of what the expected tenants are wanting.
How do you calculate that?
But that would be based off of whatever the engineer is back with.
So, so we derive from the transportation tables, trips that are generated per square foot of retail use or per type of use, if it's a, if it's a heavy use, say it's different. A church is different from a cookout. But we use tables that have used historical data to give us trips that are generated by a certain number of square feet. So this particular project falls below the three thousand trip per day threshold, but above the two hundred and fifty day trip per day threshold, three thousand being. Three thousand being an N C D O T requirement and two hundred and fifty being a city of Graham requirement. So we, as part of that, we have to come ask you for special use permit.
And you have UNC Health going in one side, and do you know what's going in the other?
We we don't know.
Oh, but you do know UNC.
I don't know that either. I do know that they did not want the entire building, and I I just have a limited knowledge of what's going to go there.
So is the inside of the building just like a shell? You don't know what that is yet, right? Okay. And have all the neighbors in that area been notified?
Yes.
Okay. And you have one entrance coming off fifty-four, right?
We have two.
Two?
Yes, ma'am. So.
So D O T allows you to have two?
Well, historically, we've had um good experience, uh, learning from things that we've done over the years and similar traffic generators, similar shopping centers, similar office buildings. Uh, you know, I eat at Micanose all the time. That's one of my designs, and I wish we had had two driveways. Uh, vertical constraints, Rogers Road intersection limited us to that. Uh, so I'm not too proud to say that I've learned from things, and then we did our best to get two access points here, and the D O T was amenable to that and welcomed that. Staff and City Hall did the same thing. We're 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 all learning, and we're better now than we were twenty-five years ago.
You okay with that? I just know that that was a big thing that, you know, Nathan always, you know, pushed through with saying that uh yeah, we don't want, we're not gonna allow them to have more than one entrance, and I'm like, well, you've got how many businesses are in that strip center? I mean, it's like nine or ten, right?
Yeah, during that time, we would have had, uh, had we had the vertical connection um to the south, we would have been able to have a connection in addition to the one that's on um Main Street. So in a way to work around that particular case, we gave an employees and and utility dumpster corral type access uh out to the east, which did help, but the grades are so different in that particular case that we just can't get a driveway to work. Everybody would need a four-wheel drive.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So so in this case, the frontage is so broad that we're able to meet requirements of driveway separation in order to have two driveways.
Okay.
That's a bit.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you, how close is that drive to Raspberry Run up there?
So one of them is, it's it's oddly shaped so that it will directly create the fourth leg of that intersection. That's why it's kind of sweeping and not a normal perpendicular access to the parking lot. Uh, so it completes that leg of that intersection, so it's directly across from Raspberry.
You anticipate fifty-four? I know this is maybe, I'm just curious, when you're doing your planning, do you anticipate fifty-four being widened?
I can't, I don't have a clue. I don't comment to that unless uh we're told by the department that it would be, but I I have heard nothing about that at all.
Hey, any questions from council? Any comments from anybody in the public?
I would like to bring Mr. Patterson and let him speak to the value piece, uh, just for the record, uh, as his uh testimony will be firsthand and has not been written or previously submitted.
Good evening. Glib Patterson, Patterson Abrasals. My home address is eight eight five Cheeks Lane. I'm here to address the um question of the uh pertaining to the substantiability injury, substantial injury at a value of adjoining or abutting property from this property for the multi-tenant uh commercial improvement. Um, what I did was I searched for as new buildings as I could find that may or may not be multi-tenant users. Uh, looked at Burlington, now Kirkpatrick Road. I looked at Meven for the um Graham Chiropractic Building. Um, and then Meven also on the south side of Meven Oaks Road where the carpet slash restaurant is, carpet store slash restaurant near Walmart, and what I found was was really, there's no evidence to show that it does anything to harm any of the property. Really, it's with a commercial development like this coming into an area that's traditionally vacant or heavier homes on larger parcels, uh, you may have some interspersed commercial uses like we've always had on fifty-four. Um, as development trends of residential start to expand into an area, then you have uses of commercial need to start coming around. So it's a logical transition, and it's historically is what happens across the country. Um, so in my collection of data from the sales of properties in immediate areas of of this development that the data would support, there's no um would not cause any substantial injury to the adjoining property or abutting properties.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
Uh, and with that, we'll rest, and um if there are any questions, we'd like an opportunity to respond to those questions if.
Were you able to speak to any neighbors?
Uh, I did not get to speak to our neighbor to the south personally. Uh, staff engineer did. Then he and I met out at the property to make sure that any of the drainage um adjacent to the south part of the property was handled uh according to the plans, which he and I both agreed we were doing. And um after the storm, I rode by there on the way in Monday morning, no, no problems there, so.
Okay.
That is the only um that is the only interaction I've had. I haven't spoken directly with any of the neighbors.
And the residents were notified, no, no comments to the city, request for information? Okay. Um, I now ask council, uh not hearing anybody else wanting to speak. Anyone else wanting to speak? Um, need a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing, ma'am.
Second.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Okay, so I need a, any discussion by the council. Okay, I need a motion either approve or deny the special use permit for unified business development for that property located at twelve oh five East Harden Street.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the special use permit for unified business development for property located at twelve oh five East Harden Street for the use of a multi-tenant building, and that it does further the goals of the Graham twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan and is in conformance with the commercial corridor land use type, and the development does meet all six conditions required by section ten point one four four of the developmental ordinance.
I hear a second.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. I hope you're able to bring UNC Healthcare here. Thank you. New business, M O U, Alamanth County Sheriff's Office, emergency detention evacuation. The city council will consider renewing a memorandum of understanding between the City of Graham and Alamanth County Sheriff's Office detailing the response to an emergency detention evaluation. I recognize our city manager, Erin, uh, Megan Garner. Bob.
Good evening, city council. The Alamanth County Sheriff's Office in Alamanth County has requested renewal, us and them, for emergency detention evacuation. We do have a current M O U with them, which was originally signed in twenty nineteen. This is an updated agreement. I can go over some of the highlights for you if that would be beneficial. The city reserves their discretion to determine the priority and use of the facilities in the event of any disaster. However, the city intends to make reasonable efforts to assist as outlined within the agreement. The M O U establishes procedures and delineates responsibilities for the evacuation and temporary housing of Alamanth County inmates at the Graham Rec Center in the event of a disaster or emergency that exceeds the county's and sheriff's response capacity. Upon request by the county or sheriff and subject to facility availability, the city shall make available space to temporarily house up to five hundred inmates as a secondary evacuation location. Provided such use does not unreasonably disrupt operations, city operations, or cause undue hardship. The sheriff shall provide all personnel, security, and supplies necessary to house, supervise, and care for inmates while at the Graham Rec Center. The sheriff may initiate an evacuation request verbally, however, all requests must be confirmed in writing as soon as practicable. The city would be entitled to reimbursement and uh financial responsibilities that are um detailed within the agreement as well. The county was going to consider um this memorandum of understanding at their agreement yesterday. However, because of the weather, that was postponed until next week.
Um, okay, um, did you talk to them about the issue that we have with having the summer camps there, and could could they alternate that with a school, the school system? Because obviously, when we have kids at the summer camp, the school system would be a more attractive alternative because they have no kids at the school, and during the school year, we would be a more attractive alternative.
Yeah, I have not discussed the school situation with them directly, although I'll be happy to relay that to them um if regardless of after what uh council action may be tonight. I will say during times of summer day camp or any other issues, we do have the right to refuse should their request um unduly interrupt our ordinary operations. So we do have an out during that time, for example.
I just would hate for them to find that out during a emergency. So just say, I I just want us to say to them, we're probably not gonna allow this in the summer, and that's three and a half months, you know, that you potentially wouldn't have a place, and if you think that we're the place, that might not.
On the south.
Yeah, it might not be the situation. We're not gonna give up the revenue that we, and and displace all these campers and have parents scrambling where to go so that inmates have an evacuation location, and they just need to make other arrangements, and we suggest the school system because it makes logical sense that we could work hand in hand with them.
Yeah, I'll be happy to relay that to um my contact there.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the M uh mutual, um, what's the O stand for?
Memorandum of Understanding.
Memorandum of Understanding between the City of Graham and the Alamanth County Sheriff's Office in the event of emergency detention evacuation.
Madam Mayor, I make the motion that we approve.
I hear a second.
Okay.
All all in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Ordinance amendment, civil penalties, parking fine increase. City council will consider an amendment to the traffic to replace penalty chart for parking violations. I need a, what? I'd like to recognize Aaron Holland about this.
Hey, thank you, ma'am. Um, yes, this is probably one of the easiest items that you have on the agenda tonight. Basically, the item has already been approved whenever council approved the rate and fee schedule during the budget process. What what we're doing in in this instance, the the fines that you're referencing with the parking fines are are located within Dakota ordinances. We're trying to point folks back to the rate and fee so we don't have these fines in two different locations. Otherwise, we may miss a year of updating one and not the other. Now this will point any one that reads Dakota ordinances to the rate and fee schedule.
So did the twenty-dollar fee take effect July one, or it takes effect with this?
Yeah, it took effect.
It took, it took effect July one. We just need to update the Dakota ordinances to reflect what has already been approved with the rate and fee schedule.
So you didn't have to get this approved in order to start the 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 new increased fee?
We didn't. Yeah.
So otherwise, I need a refund.
So you're. Really, I dropped that thing off, so.
The old chart.
I did not get a ticket for the record. I I park in the right place, but I paid somebody else's parking ticket that didn't park in the right place that came to see me, so I just paid it. It's fine. Um. Okay, do I hear a motion to approve or deny the ordinance amendment to chapter twenty, traffic and vehicle, article one?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the ordinance amendment to chapter twenty, traffic and vehicles, article one, in general, section twenty dash two, civil penalties to replace the penalty chart for parking violations.
A second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, City of Graham boards and commission appointments. Think um I'd like to submit a a, like, most everything here. I think there's like one out of all of these that is not being put on, that I'm not recommending on my slate. Uh, not that they wouldn't be available, maybe to be on one that the clerk's about to advertise, because we just got a resignation um July seventh, which was after the packet went out, but before the meeting. So this is the slate that I propose. A B C Board, Robert Parish, which is a reappointment. Appearance Commission and Tree Boyd, Emily Odell, which again is a reappointment. Um, and no other vacancies are available. Graham Historical Museum Board, which is Karen Chan and Gail Walker, um, that again requested reappointment. Um, Graham Housing Authority, there was two people that applied for that. Um, recommend Maynard Genasis. Je, I don't know how to say that. Genus, does that sound right? Genus? Okay, Historic Resources Commission, um Benjamin, I do not know how to say that either. Boch, Bochhausen, because it sounds German, uh, is, who is also a reappointment. Um, he was filling an unexpired term and then is now up for reappointment. Planning Board, uh, Planning Board and Board of Adjustment, uh, Dean Ward and Tony Bailey requesting a reappointment. Um, Michael Benesch has resigned, and and the people that have applied are not in the E T J, and his position is an E T J position, so the clerk will need to advertise that, and we'll have to take that up on the August meeting. And Recreation Commission, Nikki Smith and Jay Cook also request reappointment. Um, that is my slate for recommendation. Do I have a second?
A second motion.
I'd like to add for the Historical Museum to add, uh, for the vacancy, Casey Boswell.
Is there a vacancy?
Yes.
Two.
Yeah, it with the, with the slate proposed, you would still have um two vacancies on the Graham Historical Museum Board.
Two on there for reappointment?
And then two.
Plus.
I didn't understand that. I'm I'm sorry. Yes, please, we want Casey Boswell to be on the Historic Museum Board, and we're also reappointing her for the Historic Resource Commission, right?
She's not on the resource.
Oh, okay.
She's not on there now.
I'm so sorry. Well, I, okay, the way I'm reading this, I'm so sorry. I was misunderstanding. So Casey Boswell for the Historic Museum Board, and I also would like to request her being on the Historic Resource Commission because we have a vacancy there in addition to Benjamin Bochhausen for reappointment. Is that okay? With everybody? I think I got everybody. I think there's one person, but again, I, we, but everybody that asked to be on is getting put on something.
Yeah, if I may add, just for clarification, we would have the E T J position for Planning Board to advertise and one vacancy on the Recreation Commission.
For August.
Correct.
Yep.
Madam Mayor, our second motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Question?
Oh, so sorry, yes.
Fine. Uh, with respect to the pending matter of the E T J appointment, since that's made by the commissioners, what is the city's role in seeking applicants?
The city council makes a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners on any E T J members.
Can y'all normally do that?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, public comment period, um.
I'm sorry, was there a vote on that? I didn't have, I just have the motion.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Approved it, yes. Public comment period. Um, we have Keith Westbrook.
Good evening. Uh, Keith Westbrook, six oh four Truck Water Court. I'm I'm here tonight to comment about the potholes on Trolinger Road. They just get worse. I've talked to Rod, he's been over there twice, temporary, he come back, he's fixed this pothole, that pothole. I've got all my neighbors telling me, why don't they do nothing about it? I'd just like to see if Rod's been over there and marked areas, not once, but twice now. He's had to remark them because they wore off. I was just wondering if there's any can we make any attempt to get this done while school's out, because it's a perfect time to get these things fixed? Because it's a perfect time to get these things fixed.
On Trolinger Road?
Trolinger Road. Yes, ma'am. I thank you for your help.
That's a city road.
I can, I can tell you that I got a peek of the, um, public comment signup sheet before the meeting. So I did reach out to our Public Works Director and he said that Trolinger is an NC DOT road. So if that's, um.
That's true.
So we'll be glad to relay that to DOT regarding the potholes and submit it to them for repairs.
All the problem areas are from where they have done sewer cuts and water line cuts. Because the one he fixed was the new house and it went all the way across the road. Now they come back and fix that. I'm still saying, I thought the city, I mean, why does the city mark, I know it's DOT.
Yeah, generally unless it's due to a repair, we don't, like a, a water sewer repair, we don't fix potholes on DOT roads. We'll be glad to check into it a little further and just make sure that whoever's responsible.
And to address the other pothole complaint that I got, I had Erin reach out to DOT about potholes on Pardon Street and 54. And if you'll like relate to the council what you found out about that.
Area immediately around that project area is where.
Roundabout.
Roundabout is where the project is going to take care of any issues there. I know the, the question was where, where are they going to go to the interstate further out? But it sounds like just the project area was going to be where they were going to focus the repair of the potholes.
So when is it on schedule to repair the potholes the rest of the way down to the interstate?
I haven't seen, I haven't seen that.
When is it, I mean, they have a schedule, right?
I'm, I'm, I absolutely, they have a schedule, we just haven't seen it. I haven't seen anything that says they're coming anytime soon.
Can you a- ask them what it's, I mean, it, it has a.
Try to find out.
Yeah, just find out when the regular maintenance is for 54 because I like to post it. Because I've had a couple of people ask me about, when is that going to be done? I said, well, around the roundabout, it's going to be done at the end of that project. But after that, I don't know, I don't know how far down, far, far down on 54 they're going to go. Um, and, and what have they, what have they decided on the roundabout as far as like easements? They were notifying property owners about easements, but then they rescinded that. So what are they doing about easements?
Well, there was, the rescinding was where we were involved. It's on, it's in DOT hands now, so they're handling whatever they're needing to get right now. So I haven't heard anything else from them.
I thought they were proposing or something to put, um, electrical lines or something in the ground. Mr. Cates called me there, that's like three houses up. You, you know what I'm talking about, the letter that was given out. Okay, so you don't know? Well, I, I just wish they would get like, figure it out and not like, because when they send out those letters, it just gets everybody riled up. And then it's like, okay, so what are they doing? Well, they don't know what they're doing. Okay, well, why'd you send the letter out? Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. So at least I can let Mr. Cates know something about that. It's the people on, if you're coming from 54, it's the people on the left-hand side now, not the people on the right-hand side. So, um, any comments from staff? Erin, you got anything? Renee? Megan?
I do, I have one. I know it's out of character. I just want to publicly thank all of our employees for their tremendous response during the, the storm event Sunday evening, leading into Monday and even in onwards from here. Some of them are in the room tonight, a lot of them are not. But I do think we have a tremendous staff and what they did to respond undoubtedly saved lives of some, some of our folks here in town. And that is absolutely to be applauded and recognized. And, and so many people helped in so many different ways that I just want to express my appreciation to them for what they did and their dedication to the city and all the ways that they've made an impact, not just on us, but members of our community. So I just want to say thank you.
Um, and, uh, any comments from the council? Megan? Got anything, Paul?
I have a couple of things.
Okay.
Um, first of all, um, it's come to my attention that one of our ordinances in the UDO, section 10.337, under, for classes of subdivisions. Um, we have a very strangely worded ordinance there where it says, uh, the following classes of supervisions are hereby established. Number one, supervision minor, a subdivision that divides a tract or parcel of land into no more than four residential lots and does not involve the construction or extension of any public street or utility. Um, my, my issue with that, and I've done some research on this with neighboring, uh, municipalities and some municipalities that aren't, aren't neighboring. And also with the state of North Carolina. You know, I find it odd that it doesn't mention like a designated remainder parcel for that sort of thing. Like if, if I were, if I bought, bought two acres of land and I put my house in the back corner. And then five years later, I decide, you know what, I think I want to subdivide that. Want to subdivide it and put, you know, four more houses on it. And I can't do that unless it's a major subdivision because, you know, you know, there's no, there's no out for that, my parcel, my house that's already there. So, you know, some communities do make, you know, a concession for that and say that it means a subdivision creating, in this case, uh, law insider says, five or more lots or units, not counting a designated remainder parcel as defined as one of the five or more lots. So I was wondering if we could, uh, get a consensus to look at this or have staff look into changing this, to change the wording a little bit. Uh, if, if we need to put a acreage limitation on it, we could do that. But I just wanted to know what you guys thought about that. And, and our, you know, I, I chuckled when I looked at, uh, our, our definition of a major subdivision is a subdivision that is not a minor subdivision. And I thought, gosh, you know, can we be a little bit more specific to that without just saying, wha- whatever doesn't fall over here, falls over there. So I'm asking if we can get a consensus from council to direct staff to look into changing the wording on that, that section 10.337, classes of subdivisions.
Okay. I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with her.
Okay.
Awesome. Um, the other thing I wanted to just.
Did you have somebody that complained to you about that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they brought it to my attention, yes. Um, the other thing was I was going to ask, uh, city manager here, what's going on with our, I know our police officer, our police chief is going to be out in, what, September? So where are we on that? And are we going to have some sort of hiring committee as they've done in the past? Maybe with a council member on board or the mayor or someone? Where, where are we with all that?
So Erin and I are going to, are getting ready to release a survey to members of the police department to get their feedback on what is important for them and their next police chief. We're also finalizing details for the assessment center that will be held that is consisting of subject matter experts from sometimes neighboring areas and sometimes a little bit further out in the different, I'll say, um, sessions. Well, I mean, even just, you know, the, the assessment center generally isn't just an interview. It's, you know, some real live, um, interactive processes. So we recruit help from subject matter experts in other jurisdictions to assist in those different areas.
When do you anticipate that being completed?
Um, I think there's a, a better than decent chance we'll have someone named by the end of the, um, before the retirement date.
How many open vacancies do we have on the police force right now?
I don't believe they have any vacancies. I think, um, we had a freeze on them when we weren't sure what was going to happen with the SROs. So we weren't going to hire any vacancies. And since the school system approved that memorandum of understanding, I believe they filled, at least with conditional offers, any vacancies they had.
How many was that?
There were five SROs that were subject to not being funded.
So you had five vacancies?
I don't know, I know we didn't have more than five.
Well, just, I think that it, you know, it's just not great to, if you already know that you're going to be bringing in a new police chief, to not like be hu- I mean, why not wait a couple of months and let the new police chief hire who they want? I don't understand why we're, nobody was in a hurry the whole year to hire for that position, those positions.
Yeah, we hire as vacancies become available or even as we know, like retirements are, are becoming available. We were continuously advertising to fill those. We don't, unless there's a funding freeze like we had, um, we don't wait to advertise those. We wouldn't fill, let's, let's just say like an assistant chief position. We wouldn't fill that with, um, anyone until the new chief was named. What's been hired have been police officer ones.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I just feel like across the board, if someone's leaving, you know, it just makes sense that if you have openings, that you would, as long as you're adequately staffed, that you would be able to just wait on allowing that person to be able to hire who they want.
Yeah, I don't think, currently we are in a position to wait. Um, just looking at Sunday, for example, they were operating on minimum staffing um, before they ended up calling other employees back. We have a number of employees out for, for various approved reasons. Um, and some have been extended times and, and kind of shuffling people around. So I would say any vacancies we have now are critical to fill as quickly as possible because of, um, leave, approved leave for other reasons. And some of those are supervisor level positions where the, the employee is out for various reasons.
How many people did we have working?
They started the shift with four, which is their minimum staffing. Four patrol officers.
And then how many did they call in?
I don't know the answer to that.
So as far as like the requirements for the new police chief, is there going to be any change to like allow for experience to count in place of or in lieu of a, like a master's degree or something like that?
Yeah, so we don't have a master's degree. We've reviewed the job description internally and a master's degree is not something that we're requiring for the advertisement.
Are you, what are, what, what are you requiring?
Uh, I believe the qualifications right now are, um, obviously a BLT certification, a bachelor's degree. Um, and I don't know the number of years of experience, but obviously something with supervision would be something that would be very important. There's also an administrative component to that. Um, and, you know, being well-versed in the various, various areas within policing.
Okay, if, so do you have a problem with, um, a committee being formed then, what, what Bonnie's saying?
Well, I think we're using that anyway through an assessment center.
So who would be on that committee?
It will be staff members, some internally, but some from external agencies with subject matter experts in the different, um, sessions we would have through there. So that's, that's typical. Uh, that happened when the, um, fire chief was hired, that was happened, that happened when I was hired.
Yeah, I think the council just has some, uh, concerns, I think, about what I've heard uh, about, you know, al- always in the past, the police chief was a, you were able to have people be able to apply, um, whether they had a bachelor's degree or not. And we've had several police chiefs, fire chiefs that have been hired that don't have bachelor's degree. And it's like, for some reason, all of a sudden, the, the qualifications has changed, um, since, since that was allowed. And I think the council, um, well, several council members, some, some community members, some people from the police department have all like said, why is it being changed? Because that's not what we, we want people to be able to feel like they got a fair shake at being able to, um, use the experience that they have and be able to put forward a, um, a, you know, their application and compete, um, for the position. Um, then I guess what Bonnie's saying is that like, could we get somebody from, maybe the sheriff would agree to sit on that, um, committee? Maybe a council member, not me, somebody else. Uh, appreciate you doing that, but not me. But, um, maybe a council member could sit on there, maybe another staff person could sit on there. But is it, if that's what, if that's what the majority of the council wants is to have that type of committee for the hiring of, um, department heads, is that, is that an issue?
I do think it could pose some issues because department heads fall within the purview of the manager. So the manager and the attorneys fall within the purview of the city council. So I do think that could possibly cause some implications moving forward. So who, who would be the one to hire those department heads if, you know, the city council was involved in doing that? Who would be the one to supervise those department heads? I think it would be worthwhile for me to reach out to the school of government to get some clarification on that because ethically, I don't want to run afoul of what falls within my bucket. Just like I know you don't want to run afoul of what falls within your bucket and, and, you know, potentially.
To, um, just like if the sheriff's on the hiring committee, he's not going to be managing the person. Um, and I think it's more of like, everybody that has a stake in it would be advocating for what they're hearing. There's many times, um, like in hiring a public utilities director or whatever, that people feel much more comfortable coming to us, telling us things. Employees sometimes feel much more comfortable coming to us to, to, um, you know, to relay issues and stuff.
Yeah, I think one difference.
Developers and things like that when they're in critical positions, so.
I think a difference between the sheriff or as someone from the outside serving in that capacity versus, we'll just say, someone from city council is technically you fall within the same organization, under the same structure. So I think that has the potential to muddy the water versus the sheriff who is a completely separate agency. He's elected by the people. I think there's a, a clear line of separation between the two organizations.
Yeah, I think, I, 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 I do strongly advocate, you know, because I've heard from multiple people for, like even when the assistant chief job was there, that they want people to be able to, we don't need, yes, they need to be able to do administration, but we don't need a administrator. And by saying somebody has to have that degree and not be able to take the same level of experience and, and use that to, um, be able to be qualified to even apply, like that seems to me unfair.
Yeah, I agree.
Especially when historically, we've been trying to tell these people, if you work here long enough, you put in your time, you're a great employee. We favor hiring from within qualified people. And it's not, it's not saying that you've promised anybody anything, but it's to say that we want to encourage longevity in our staff and to like this, you know, there's people that have been there, not just, not just in the police department, but I'm talking about the fire department, the public works, the. but I'm talking about the fire department, the public works, the water department. I mean, they've put in a lot of time and if they feel like the, the rules change after they've already put in all this time, it seems a little deflating to morale because those weren't the rules as they started out to be.
I just, I just think sometimes experience can be as valuable, maybe more valuable than having a pigskin hanging on your wall. Like I said before, there's people that have bachelor's degrees, master's degrees. I wouldn't let them walk my dog. I'm just saying.
I mean, a master's degree.
I, I think that there should be some sort of standard of, you know, a bachelor degree or applicable training, you know? And if you have, I would rather have someone that has tons of experience, especially, you know, hiring within, which I'm always a proponent of that. I've been, always been a proponent of promoting within, hiring within. You know, that's something that I feel real strongly about, you know, being military and stuff too. You know, that you work, you work, you work because you want to, you want to move up. So, you know, if you've got somebody and you're going to have, I know we have people in our PD, I know we do, that, you know, they might not have that, that qualification, but they might have all this other stuff. So I, I would just-
I mean, isn't this not even-
I would ask you to be fair in giving those people a chance. You know, because, just because they don't have the degree, to me, that's irrelevant if they've got the training. That's all I'm saying.
If somebody has all that training and you give them the opportunity and you say, in evaluating all the internal candidates that we have, this person's the best person for the job. And you hire that person and you, as a manager, wants to say, well, I want you to go do administrative training because you're lacking in that area. Or I need you to go do, I don't know, depending on what it is, you know, like in utilities, if it was like, I need you to go get some sort of certification that you don't have. But I just don't want somebody, like if there was somebody that was still there, because you almost have to wait so long for these positions to open. But like, I'd sit there about a Burke Robinson, you know, never getting the opportunity to even get that job because he doesn't have a whatever, and I'm not saying him specifically, he may, I don't even know if he has a college degree or not, because I don't care. I, I have all this education and really for the job, I mean, would you hire me because I have a master's degree? Or would you hire my husband to be a public works director when he has, you know, no, no master's degree, but he has all this experience in construction? I mean, you would not want me building your house. You would not want me fix a pothole on the street. You would not want me, you know, fighting a fire. You want to hire, to me, the experience is so much more valuable than, like she said, the, the, the degree on the wall. And that's what I hear consistently from employees, from other municipalities, from other agencies and from the residents. So I just hope, these things are very, I know, um, very sensitive issues. And when we hire a city manager, there's never a time that we've ever hired a city manager that we didn't have fallout or somebody fussing about something or saying, you know, they didn't get a fair shake or whatever. And I, I really like, to the point that, you know, someone made earlier, we learn from our mistakes and we, we want to try to make it as fair and open and above board for everybody that wants to apply, to apply. And I, I think we limit people from, you know, fussing about, well, this person didn't even get a shot. And, you know, I don't want to see that because we've hired certainly great police chiefs, fire chiefs, public works directors that did not have a college degree. And things change. I get that. I understand the importance of a college degree. I do. Especially like, who would have ever thought that electronics would be running the water department, right? And all the knowledge that you have to have about that. I, I get that. So I think to allow people to be able to fairly apply, you, you stack up their, you know, all of their goods and negatives and pick somebody through that committee process of who is the best candidate for the job. And then at that point, if there's anything that they're lacking, make them go get it in order to keep the position or to have the position. I mean, I don't, you know, that's something that's administratively, I think, something that you can do. And the council is, is not trying to get into that, but I do think that it would be fair, especially people that have put in years and years of service. I just don't want to have people feel like they worked for nothing.
Yeah, we always, with the federal service, you know, when we hired people, I was on a lot of hiring panels and we would always use, you know, the college education or the education factor. The, the degree was kind of like a tiebreaker. All other qualifications being equal with experience and knowledge, you know, all that kind of stuff. We used it like as a tiebreaker, but it wasn't weighted as heavily, say, if you were using a weighted system, as experience, functional experience, functional knowledge, you know, usable, functional knowledge.
Well, I think-
I'm just, you know.
Administratively, it's not, it, for a lot of jobs, administration for your job, Megan, is super important. You're not out here fighting a fire. You're not fixing a pothole, right? It's great for you to have that knowledge, but to me, like, that is not the most necessarily important thing. You've got to be able to know finance. You've got to know budgeting. You've got to know the law. I mean, my gosh, please keep everybody out of, you know, trouble, right?
That's what I'm trying to do. If I may say, I, I hear and I sincerely appreciate all the feedback. And I, and I say that with 100% sincerity. These sorts of conversations have an impact on our employees. And, and, you know, they, they very much tune into these sorts of things. And, and even after the last meeting, when, when comments like this were made, sometimes it starts chaos and, you know, wildfires in different areas where, you know, we don't really necessarily need that, you know, especially at a time like this. I, I'd be glad to have, you know, individual conversations if, if any council member would, would like to discuss it further. But I do 100% hear everything that, that you've provided tonight and I think two meetings ago when, when we discussed this.
Yeah, I think generally we want to say, like, like, things wa- need to be weighted, you know, depending on what the position is, public works and things like that. I just would hate to know that I would get a position because I have some sort of education in a classroom over somebody that's actually gone out and fixed a pothole and I get the public works director job because I have a, like, we don't need, to me, like, that's not, yes, it helps you do your job, but administratively, it's just not, not to me, like, the most important thing that you need. And I think the other thing that I hear over and over from people is hire from within and promote from within. So I hope we're gonna, you know, fulfill that mission. I mean, Jerry was a big proponent of that. Vic Yulis was a big proponent of that. I don't know. I feel like we appreciate it.
Statements like that need a caveat. Just because you're in the organization, that automatically says, okay, yep, you can apply for these positions because you've been here. I think what is, what Megan has done has, and she's advocated to her department heads to build a training and experience program that you prepare people.
Right.
You know, so they know, hey, you're going to be a policeman? There are things you, you need education, but you need experience as well.
Yep.
But it's not an automatic-
Career ladder's been great.
You got to have-
It is, yeah.
I think that's an important thing that has been instituted. Those now our employees know. I have, I don't dead end after I reach a certain point. I can, here's things I can do.
You've gotten good feedback on creating those incremental career ladders where people felt like they were just pigeonholed and they had no possibility of being able to move up or work towards something better. I mean, you've gotten good feedback on that since that's been implemented, right?
I'd like to add one thing. The only thing that I've heard is that the potential applicants would like to know what the requirements are and they would like to know when they would be able to apply.
Yes.
That's the, that's the biggest thing I have heard.
And we'll make that public to, to the entire universe, you know, when that, when we're ready for that phase of it. It's not going to be shrouded in secrecy. People are going to know. And when we put the job posting out there, we're going to also advertise the assessment center date so that applicants can know, should they advance in the process, that this is the date to kind of hold available for that.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'd just like to comment briefly on, on the previous conversation. I'm very concerned. For 35 years since I've been at this newspaper, I've heard this council, not necessarily these five members, but this council, the Burlington City Council, the Meben City Council and every other local jurisdiction, expound repeatedly on the fact that the North Carolina standard for government is a council manager form of government. And the council hires two people, the manager and the attorney. Some places, like in Burlington, also hired the clerk, and I think Meben does. But in other words, that is the sole extent of this council's, supposed to be, the sole extent of this council's dealings with employees within the city of Graham. And to hear the lobbying that is going on from this council at this meeting and previously is, I think, inappropriate, unethical and potentially illegal. As the manager very delicately mentioned that she would check with the Institute of Government, I think it's entirely inappropriate for this council to get involved in the way y'all have described. But fundamentally, the original point that I believe it was Councilmember Whitaker brought up, of having a member of the council on some sort of screening committee, that would be an inherent conflict of interest. Very inappropriate. I don't believe your attorney will let you get away with that. Certainly shouldn't. Very inappropriate. A professional, and by the way, it's very interesting to hear you talk about all this lobbying about wanting an internal candidate. You hired a manager who wasn't an internal candidate. You hired a fire chief who wasn't an internal candidate. So, you know.
I disagreed with that.
Well, I think we've heard via the grapevine, a lot of people who disagree with one or both of those, to be quite honest. But the main thing is, this council's responsibility is the hiring of a manager. If, no offense, Ms. Garner, but if this council-
Within, Aaron didn't want to take the position.
But if this council doesn't like the way-
It's more of, we're not saying in specific, we're not trying to, I think what we're saying more in general, that we hope that the position in general for department heads, there's a statute that I think that's out there that says something to the effect of, that refers to hiring committees and stuff. So I think we're, A, I get, I'm not going to speak for Bonnie, but inquiring about, I didn't know this issue was necessarily going to be brought up, but I wanted to give some input because we do try to, like, I don't, we, you know, I like to have this, I don't want to have like necessarily a private conversation. I want to say in general.
And, and by the way, that which I, I want to deal with specifically, that Ms. Garner solicited to have private conversations with you, that is not appropriate. Personnel is supposed to be her domain. You're not supposed to have anything to do with any personnel in the city of Graham. Every time there's some scandal, Madam Mayor, let me, let me finish.
Not a public hearing.
Every time that there's some scandal, feeling really like-
It's not a public hearing. Please sit down.
Obviously, there's often an effort by the public to make y'all do something about this errant public employee. And every time, I always hear the lecturette, no, that's the manager's responsibility. The council can't get into that. And that is correct. And you can't get into it when you're hired, when you have one already.
Advocating, not advocating for any, there are plenty of people over there that, when, when-
Why are you explaining to him? It's not even a public hearing. I mean, this, this was just a comment.
I just say-
I don't really care what you think.
How, how are these job descriptions being changed when for years and years and years, they have been said that this is what it is? Because as far as I know of, I've been on the council for a long time. I don't know why it's automatically gotten changed or if that's something that's done by previous city managers and things like that. As far as I know, those things usually came before the council. So we're not getting into saying we're going to hire this person or that person. We're not doing that. But what we're saying is that we hope that the evaluation, regardless of who applies, that it's open and that things like experience are weighted more than educate, than necessarily education, administrative education, depending on the position. That's not, that's not lobbying for any particular person.
Yes, ma'am, it is. Y'all have been lobbying repeatedly for Captain Dwayne Flood. He's an excellent employee. I would encourage you to consider him, city manager. He's an excellent employee. He has excellent leadership skills. He'd be a great police chief, in my opinion. But my opinion doesn't count and frankly, shouldn't count any more than your opinions. It's the city manager who is responsible to hire.
She will be the one doing the hiring, you know, but-
Should not be lobbied by you.
It's not being lobbied.
Nothing to do with any particular person.
No, it doesn't.
We just hired somebody.
Yes, ma'am, it does, and you know it does.
It's not, it's not true, Tom. The, the bottom-
Fire- Again, why aren't we even, why do we care? Let's just stop. That's his opinion and we-
We just hired-
The only part that's not, the only part that's not my opinion is the part I would bring back to you. I think you have to consider that your action is inappropriate.
Make a motion that we adjourn.
It's not-
I make a motion, we adjourn.
We make a motion, we go into closed session.
Tom.
I'm done.
When, when we hire people for all these other department heads, do you not think that a standard should be across the board for public works, police, fire chief, police chief, all of those? It's not being applied evenly, I don't think. We, we have a fire chief that didn't have a, a college education. And we, we've had plenty of fire chiefs in the past that didn't have college educations. And I agree with that. Public, uh, uh, public recreation, public, and, 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 you know, he may or may not, I, I think he does have a college degree. But again, does that matter if he has all these certifications in recreation? That's, I think, what we're trying to say is that it needs to be fair across the board and it needs to be consistent across the board. And everybody that applies, regardless of what position they hold at the, at, with the city, that I just want us to see that we don't have a bunch of pushback from people saying, well, I've worked here all these years or I've worked here for the last five years and I thought I had a chance of applying, but I don't even have a chance of applying. Somebody can get it if they've got a, got this thing over me and because they just changed the, the rules for it. That's all I'm saying. And that's just my, my, my personal thing is that we need to be consistent and fair across the board and it doesn't matter who applies. And I, and I hope that whoever gets that, whether that's, it's somebody internally or externally, I just hope that we can consistently say that we're not constantly moving the goal post. And I'm, I'm sorry if you feel differently than that, but I think that if it's been a certain way- And I'm, I'm sorry if you feel differently than that, but I think that if it's been a certain way for, you know, the last 25 years, and then all of a sudden a position comes open and now all of a sudden we have new rules, like where did that come from?
If it came from anywhere, it would come from the city manager. Until and unless y'all.
To terminate this conversation.
We've got other business.
We're done here. You know, it's time for our comments. He doesn't need to be commenting on it.
Well.
Okay, what, what was your motion?
To go ahead and go into closed session and let's finish this meeting.
Excuse me.
May I?
May I hear the entire motion, please?
I was, I'm sorry, I was getting there. May I ask, I'll be happy to read it or if one of the council members could read it, but we are required to cite the statute or statutes and any pending litigation, if there is any, when we go into closed session.
Just make a motion to go into a closed session and according to the North Carolina General Statute, 143, 318, 11, 3, and 6, and consult with attorney, employee, or retain the public body to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body in both current, lost my place, City Motor Land Company LLC, petitioner versus the city of Graham, respond to the file 18C, B297, potential litigation and personnel issue.
And yes, if I could ask one clarifying point on that. The personnel issue is in fact an employee of the city, not a council member?
That is correct.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, what did he say? I don't know what it is about.
He asked if the personnel issue was about a city employee and not a city council member.
Okay.
I believe was what he asked.
Ricky informed when I got here that I needed to recuse myself for the first part of this closed session. Is that correct?
From a portion of the closed session, yes.
Okay, so can I get a motion second for that? Because I don't even know what it is.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we allow you to recuse yourself.
Need to approve the first motion.
I make a motion, we go into closed session.
I've already made the motion.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, I don't know if I can vote on it or not. I'm just going to stay.
You can't go into closed session.
Okay.
I make a motion that the mayor be allowed to recuse herself from the closed session.
May, may I add, just for a portion of the closed session?
Okay, just for a portion of the closed session.
I second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Y'all just call me when.
Y'all just call me when you.
Oh, oh.
Fracking is out.
Eating sugar.
Okay. I think we make a motion to come back into open session.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I do hereby make a motion that in the matter of County Motor Land Company LLC versus the City of Graham, case 18 CVS 2491 of the Alamance County.
You said, it says 279 on my paper.
I read it off of here, but. 2491, that's what I said, right?
It says 18 CVS 279.
That must be a misprint on there then.
Just let's make sure it's the right one.
Case number 18 CVS 2491 of the Alamance County Clerk's Office, that the City of Graham enter into a joint consent decree with the County Motor Land Company LLC, seeking the court's approval to remand the variance request for rehearing before the City of Graham Board of Adjustment. I further direct and authorize the city attorneys to take all necessary actions to cause the joint consent decree along with County Motor Land Company LLC be filed with the court and the terms therein be carried out.
Do I hear a second?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
I just wanna interrupt, cuz I, says Fox 8's reporting that a missing woman was declared dead after a vehicle was taken out of a pond here in Alamance County following the flooding, Graham officer said. Did you know about that?
I can tell you, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we received a news release since the start of this meeting that came through that was regarding that. So as soon as I have a minute, I'll be glad to forward it to you.
Yeah, it's very sad to hear. I guess her vehicle was swept away in the floods and they weren't able to get out. So yes, please pray for her family. That's very sad to hear. Anything else on the, anything else anybody like to discuss? We've got some events coming up. Got Alco Events event coming up, right?
A Speedway on Saturday.
On Saturday, and do they have fireworks? No, not, you already did the fireworks part, right? Didn't y'all have?
We're not doing fireworks for them this year.
Okay, and then they've got a concert coming up, the third Saturday of the month. So I hope you guys will all attend that. I hear a motion to.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.